All right, everybody. Let's go ahead and get started. Sorry for the delay. We have to check a couple of things that will come up a little bit later in the meeting. I want to make sure that we are doing the things that we're supposed to do. So, welcome and good afternoon. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order, and we're going to start as usual with our roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. President Taylor.
I'm here.
Vice President Nicollet.
Good afternoon.
I am here. Trustee Smith.
Here.
Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Mayberry.
Here.
Trustee Church.
Here.
And Ivy is not here right now, anyway. And, Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I also want to just note that our superintendent is at a superintendent's meeting and on her way down. She's actually, the meeting's concluded state, so she's on her way down and so, sitting in her seat, and we are in the capable hands of our deputy superintendent, Deborah Byers-Dorf. And on that note, she's going to lead us in the pledge. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. We jump right to our consent agenda. These are items that are typically routine in nature. I won't read the intro as I usually do. It's a very full agenda. We know it's a really busy, important day. So, they're usually items that are typically routine in nature. And as we get into those, I do know that we have a trustee that would like to pull a couple of those. Trustee Church?
Thank you very much. 2.03, the minutes for May 20th, don't need staff. I just want to be able to make a comment on that. And then 2.18, Infinite Campus for $439,000.
All right. So, we will ask. Thank you, Trustee Church. Anybody else? Okay. We will ask staff for 2.18 to be in position, ready to respond to questions on that. We do have some public comment before I look for a motion from the board.
John Epalito for consent agenda item 2.27.
Welcome, Mr. Epalito. 2.27, okay.
Hi, my name is John Epalito. I'm with Protect Nevada Children. On 2.27, Pearson Education, we're going to give them another almost $300,000 for something. Basically, Pearson, for those of you who were here, when we had the data breach, I think it was 2018, the Pearson data breach, Pearson downplayed the severity of the data breach. It affected like over 100,000 kids in Washoe County schools, kids that had long since graduated. And their student data was placed for sale on the dark web. Pearson downplayed that data breach. Then the school district downplayed the downplayed version of Pearson's. It was much worse than the school district ever let on, and it's very frustrating. Then, a year or so later, Pearson had to pay a million dollars because they whitewashed it. Of course, the school board never went back to the parents and told them their kid's data was for sale on the dark web. Nobody knows who bought it. You guys forgot about the story probably by now. For the record, please. So, now, we're giving them another $257,000 in more of our kids' data. In this meeting, people have said, "We have 70 people in the IT department. What do those 70 people do?" They can't pick safe vendors. Pearson is probably the worst education vendor of all when it comes to data breaches, and you guys keep paying them. 70 people in the IT department? What do those 70 people do? And how much are we paying them? And you guys are sleeping. Sometimes you nod your head. Half the time, you don't know what's going on. It's very frustrating. These are our kids. You guys are supposed to be trustees. I don't think, I don't trust you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Epalito.
You're welcome.
That's all I have at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's the pleasure of the board, then, looking for a motion to approve consent agenda items. Let me get my numbers right. 1.01 and 1.02, 1.04 through, I'm sorry, 2.02, ah, there we go. And then 2.04 through 2.17, 2.19 through 2.29. If that is the pleasure of the board. Okay. We have motion from Trustee Rodriguez and seconded from Trustee Smith. Mr. Mayberry? Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to make a disclosure. Item 2.28, this is the appointment of Sarah Porter, where the parent represented the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission for a two-year term. I, Ms. Porter's a friend of mine. I don't have a commitment in a private capacity with her. She's also contributed to my campaign, but on advice of council, I'm making this disclosure, and I will vote on the item.
Thank you very much, Trustee Mayberry. Any discussion on the motion? The motion's in the floor to approve the aforementioned agenda items. See no further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay. The motion carries. Let the record show, it is unanimous. Trustee Church, we're going to go to you as requested, sir, for agenda item 2.03, I believe. Yes, 2.03? You said, "No questions."
No questions, staff. Nope. This is just repetitive from what I've said at previous meetings, for the record. Under the minutes, under 5.01, it states, "Members of the Board of Trustees reported on their activities, meetings, and events." To me, that's not satisfactory. When you go down to public comment, you know, Andrew Wilson reported, he gets a whole paragraph. I get zero. It doesn't explain anything that I said. Some of the things are fairly important, in my opinion. Other trustees equally report on very important things. So, it's just my opinion that I think that board reports, what we say as trustees, should be reported in paragraph form and equally to public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Any further discussion on consent agenda item 2.03? If not, looking for a motion to approve consent agenda item 2.03? Yes, Trustee Smith?
So, I have a question. This is for May 10th, right? But the board report says that there were no items heard.
On that, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, I'm confused. Why? Of course, nothing would be captured. It doesn't look like we had board reports. I'm just trying to understand.
Right. No, I think that's a really good question. And I knew, Trustee Church notified me in advance. Thank you, sir. He was going to ask about these two items. On that particular meeting, we forego, we foregoed, is that right? We didn't have board reports. Yeah. Yeah. We forewent it. We forewent it. Oh, that's awesome. Thank you, Trustee Smith. Yeah. Another, we did not have board reports on that particular one, so we can look to, I disallow those comments because he could have also picked 2.04 to make the same point. So, we just, just as a courtesy, I want you to write that down. No, I'm kidding. No, because I knew the point you wanted to make, and it could have gone to either, so.
Yeah. Actually, that was my error. I should have, my error, human error, I should have pulled 2.04, and I made my point, so thank you.
Yeah. But I knew the point you wanted to make, and so was, but that's a really, I'm glad you brought that up, because I actually looked at that and saw that we didn't have, it's like, oh, that's the one when we, we didn't have board reports. Okay? So, very good point. Other discussion? Thank you, Trustee Smith. Okay. If not, looking for a motion to approve consent agenda item 2.03? Moved by Trustee Smith. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Rodriguez. No further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion carries. Let the record show that it is unanimous. We will ask staff if they would be so kind to join us here. There are a couple of questions on consent agenda item 2.18. This is approval to renew the agreement with Infinite Campus, Inc. for the comprehensive web-based student information system beginning July 1, 2022, and expiring June 30, 2023, in the amount of $439,228.30. And we'll turn it over to Dr. Turner. Oh, questions? I'm sorry. There's no presentation questions you wanted to pull. You're looking at me like, "Turn it over for what?" My bad.
I'll try to be brief. Number one, if I look right, it looks like the price has gone down year to year, so that would be an excellent thing, correct?
We're always in agreement in a reduction in price.
Wonderful. If I remember, we had a presentation on data mining, Infinite Campus, and if I recall, there were actually representatives up on the screen from back east, and we were commenting about the weather with them. But if I remember right, they maintain the records essentially forever. I mean, 20 years from now, that student record is still maintained. Am I correct?
On October 12th, there was an Infinite Campus presentation about the student information system, not data mining. But yes, that, one of the takeaways of the presentation was, "We are charged for full-time equivalent currently enrolled students were not charged for the records that we are required to maintain."
If I can jump in on that, Trustee Church, I think I might be able to provide some clarity. That's something, that's a state requirement at this time, and that's where that came, is that that has to do with the, in the Nevada Department of Education. Not that that makes it okay, we should just forget about it, but that was, that was another part of that conversation. They maintained it and hold on to that. It didn't seem like you remembered that piece. That's where that came from.
No, I didn't. Admittedly, I didn't.
There's transcript information that's required that we maintain.
And there are other information that we have to, that we have to maintain. And then the question is, how long is that maintained? And that's in the hands of the state.
So, is there information that Infinite Campus maintains that is not mandatory per state law or policy?
I'll reference you back to the October presentation. There is other information, demographic information, that is maintained in the database, and there is discussions at the statewide Infinite Campus governance level about deletion. We're not interested in maintaining any information that is unnecessary to the, that is unrelated to Nevada revised statutes, or unnecessary for the transcript information. But that, those decisions have yet to still be made.
Who would make those?
There's an Infinite Campus Governance Group that's statewide that includes Nevada Department of Education personnel, as well as Infinite Campus administrators in all the districts.
Has the school district, Washoe County, taken a position on that?
I think I just did. We're not interested in maintaining any information that's extraneous, or outside of the scope of the NRS, or not required by the, you know, fulfillment of the transcript information.
And I can go further. That, this goes, this goes back, it predates even Dr. Turner in that same statement, and it brings to, it's not something new, and certainly in alignment, but right now, it's a requirement. Other questions, Trustee Church? Okay. We do have public comment on this?
John Epalito.
Welcome back, Mr. Epalito.
Boy, it's a good thing I'm here. I'm John Epalito, former K-12 teacher, two kids left in the district, and I'm with Protect Nevada Children. Infinite Campus, this is the database right here. This is the most data, massive database ever created on children in human history, and it's never deleted. For years, the school district has been telling us, "You're trying to get data deleted from Infinite Campus," whatever that was, six months ago, when the Infinite Campus guy was here. He said, "No one's ever asked to have any data deleted." So, I'm not quite sure where the truth is. It's probably in between there somewhere. These 82 pages, please familiarize yourself with these, and this is for the record, JJ. For Washoe County School District parents to view exactly what Infinite Campus is storing forever about your children, you can visit protectnevadachildren.org. I did this for my kids. I was amazed. For most kids that get through the system after 12, 13 years, we expect that would be about 300 to 400 pages of data. It's ridiculous, and we've been being told for years, "You guys are working on it." I don't know, there's 70 people in the IT department. Maybe that's as fast as you can go. In addition, the most, so that's Infinite Campus. The most incriminating data is also uploaded to SANE. This is much less data, maybe 1,000 data fields, 42 pages. This is what the State Department of Education collects. Everything that's not on here is not required. It's in Infinite Campus. Also, for the record, JJ, thank you. No one really knows how simply the existence of these databases may affect the future of our children. And unfortunately, so far, this board doesn't want to allow an open and honest discussion. This is exactly why I keep coming to these meetings. You hear one side, I get three minutes, they get five hours. It's not right. Here's what happened in April 20th at the candidate forum. All the candidates were asked this question, quote, the superintendent candidates, quote, "When it comes to collecting and storing student personal information, data, and schoolwork, Nevada is one of the worst states in the country. We have two massive databases that collect, store, and share data. Infinite Campus insane. This data is never deleted. Do you have any concerns with how all this stored data may affect the future of our children?" End quote. Superintendent Ebert, in her response, part of her answer was, quote, "All of what the author wrote here is true. Unfortunately, no one in power in this state is really willing to do anything. That's why I keep coming to these meetings." You can find 1,500 of us on Protect Nevada Children, Facebook, Protect Nevada Children, and for your Infinite Campus records, of course.
I'm sorry, sir. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Other questions, Trustee Church? On this item? Okay. Any other public comment, JJ? Okay. All right. Then, it's the pleasure of the board, looking for a motion to approve consent agenda item Motion by Trustee Minneto, Clerk Minneto, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Rodriguez. See no further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion carries. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next time, you two, don't be so quiet. We appreciate you being here. Okay. We are going to reorder a little bit here, which I have a little privilege to be able to do. There are some other challenges that our chief human resources officer needs to tend to, so we're going to go ahead and jump down to agenda item 3.06. Okay, everyone, 3.06? That is discussion and possible action to approve a memorandum of agreement between the Washoe Education, the Washoe County School District and the Washoe Education Support Professionals, or WESP, as they're so affectionately known by, regarding compensation adjustments to address a critical labor shortage in the Transportation, Housekeeping, and Nutrition Services Departments and Special Education Aides and Assistance to include base compensation adjustments, one-time differentials, and new hire, referral, and retention incentives. This is for action. Again, Chief HR Officer Emily Ellison, as before, as you may recall from a, from a previous board meeting, we asked staff to jump into this, because there are some critical needs, and Ms. Ellison wanted some support and direction as to how those can be approached. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, President Taylor. Again, Emily Ellison, Chief Human Resources Officer, for the record, and thank you to all the trustees and my colleagues for indulging the change of schedule so that I can get out of here a little bit earlier. As we've updated you at the last two meetings, we are working very, very closely, or we were working very, very closely with the Washoe Education Support Professionals, we call them WESP, to determine how best to proceed in addressing some really critical labor shortages that we're experiencing. The transportation shortage is obviously very visible and very public, because our students, at the end of the year, were only receiving transportation 75% of the time. But we know that we're also experiencing significant shortages that are also impacting student services in nutrition services, housekeeping, and then among our paraprofessional positions, or our special education aides and assistants. So, we really reached a critical mass. This board said, "Please work with the association to identify a solution." Everyone's first question, or first suggestion is always, "Pay them more." But we've talked at the last couple of meetings about the complexities of that. And so, I really just want to start this meeting by thanking our partners with WESP for coming to the table and for being very, very collaborative in trying to identify a solution. Because as I shared before, some of the challenges that we're facing, and some of the things that we're trying to balance here are really tricky, right? We know that if it was just as easy as paying everyone more, we would have done that, but sustainability of funding, adequacy of funding are huge concerns. And so, with that in mind, we went to WESP looking for targeted solutions, which is a little bit different than what we normally do when we're negotiating. WESP represents all of their members, not just the members in the areas where we're experiencing critical shortages. And so, we really had to try and come up with a solution that would balance all of those conflicting interests, and hopefully minimize any ripple effect or negative impacts from approaching this a little bit differently than we normally would. So, with that, you know, obviously, WESP was going into this with advocacy in mind for their members. We know that these are our employees who are, who are performing the day-to-day work in our schools and making sure that our kids get there, and our kids get fed, and our classrooms are cleaned. And so, they came into this negotiation with a little bit of perspective and experience that we needed to honor while we were discussing what potential solutions could be. One of those things that kind of played into the conversation was the fact that WESP was the first unit to settle with us during the normal collective bargaining process, and as such, they settled before a thing called COVID differentials, or even anything that we were talking about. And so, other associations settled later with those kinds of provisions in their contract, and understandably, WESP heard from their members about, you know, we were affected by COVID as well, so what sort of possibilities are there for us? The other thing that we know is that the last school year, the 20, what year are we in? 21, 22 school year? For the first time ever, we implemented pilot programs for new hire, retention, and referral incentives. We did those for transportation, nutrition services, and housekeeping. And what we discovered, again, kind of based on their member and our employee feedback, was that there was a little bit of angst in the system, right? Because those aren't the only areas where we're experiencing vacancies, but they're just particularly acute in those areas. So, I share all of that information, just so you have some context for where WESP was coming from as a part of this negotiation process, and how it informed where we landed. So, what we want to talk about today is really a total compensation package, excuse me, that's designed to attract and retain all ESPs. A couple of kind of concepts to know about before we get into the specifics of the memorandum of agreement. You'll hear me talk about the big four. That's an important concept in this agreement. That's the big four departments that you'll hear us talk about. Transportation, nutrition services, housekeeping, special education aides and assistants. And the, the structure that we have recommended to all of you really looks to divide employees into three buckets, and then addresses compensation needs in a variety of ways, through base compensation adjustments, one-time differentials, and then some of the incentives that we talked about, new hire, retention, and referral. And then we also made use of the reclassification process in order to restructure and reallocate our positions. So, if you think about the three big buckets, and I'm going to, I'm going to kind of start at the end and work backwards, right? This is where we land. The three big buckets are critical shortage compensation adjustment, CSCA eligible positions. So, those are folks that are like our bus drivers, and our kitchen workers, our nutrition service worker ones, our custodian ones. Those are the positions, and the positions in the job series that are so acutely impacted that we're looking to make a base compensation adjustment. So, that's bucket one. CSCA eligible, they're getting a base compensation adjustment, and then we'll talk about the rest of their compensation package as well. But in summary, it includes a retention incentive. The middle bucket is employees not in bucket one, so they're not critical compensation adjustment eligible, but they are in the big four. So, we know that secretary positions, for example, we are not necessarily having a challenge with vacancies in secretarial positions in the big four departments, but we know that the shortages in the big four are so severe that many, 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 many of the employees are being pulled from their normal responsibilities in order to cover work in those, in those entry, entry-level positions. And then, in the third bucket, are...
I'm sorry, Ms. Ellison. What do we call them, the second bucket?
All employees in the big four.
Oh, just everybody? That are in the critical labor or whatever?
Yep.
Got you.
So, if you're not a base compensation adjustment, then you're in the big four.
Okay.
And then, the third bucket is all other ESPs. So, that is, for example, our school office staff, our clinical staff, our HR staff. I have a number of ESPs in my department. So, again, to recap, there's folks that are in positions that are so acutely short that we're going to do a base compensation adjustment. We'll talk about that in just a minute. Then there's everyone else in those big four departments. Then there's everyone else, all the other ESPs. And so, you'll see for each of those buckets that we're looking to compensate in different ways, kind of depending on the needs of those buckets. So, with that in mind, JJ, do you want to pull up the MOA? Do you have it handy by any chance? Awesome. Thank you so much. I'm going to pause there. Again, I know that this is super intense information, and different than really a lot of things we've ever talked about before. So, any other questions on sort of the groupings of employees? Okay. So, the memorandum of agreement really starts by talking about that bucket one. So, you'll see in there, critical shortage compensation adjustment process and package, and then eligibility. That outlines how you get into bucket one. So, this is what we talked about several meetings ago, where we were really looking to gather quantitative and qualitative factors that would help us identify which positions should be considered for some kind of an adjustment. So, we looked at department size, we looked at vacancy rates, we looked at annual turnover. We felt like it's really critical that these are positions that provide direct service to students, that the positions have been designated as critical labor shortage eligible through PERS, and that the shortage has a direct negative impact on students or families. So, again, circling back to the fact that we have very limited resources, and sustainability of resources is essential, we couldn't just look at every position and say, "Okay, what adjustments need to be made." We needed to narrow it down so that we were looking at really defined group of positions. And these are the positions where we were able to identify allocation changes in order to help offset some of the expense of these changes. So, for example, in transportation, there were roughly 40 vacant bus driver positions, and you all took action at a couple of meetings ago for us to be able to explore this by eliminating those 40 vacant positions, and then repurposing that funding as a part of this proposal. So, we started by creating criteria, then we applied that criteria to a variety of positions, and then that's how we identified those positions that are included as eligible within the document. The process section there really just kind of describes in more legal HR words what I just described to you, right? We look at the data for positions and then decide who meets the eligibility criteria. But it's super important to know that this, first of all, this agreement expires June 30, 2023, and the reason that we did that was not because people's pay will expire in the end of June 2023, but because we know we're probably going to learn a lot about implementation of this, the first time that we've done something like this. And so, we know that we will need to reconvene with our association partners at some point, and perhaps modify language, add to language, that sort of thing.
I want to pause you just for a minute. We have a question, Trustee Church?
Exactly on that point. So, if June of 2023, they don't, things get delayed, are we still having to pay that June, July, August, September, or does it stop?
Well, the, the compensation increase would continue. So, really, the expiration on this agreement is intended to be just for the mechanics of the agreement, not so that employees feel like we're going to be taking pay away from them. These were intended to be long-term pay adjustments, and the expiration on the agreement is just for the mechanical language.
Does that make sense, Trustee Church?
Yeah. I think, but the point is that it doesn't end there. If negotiations are ongoing and last six more months, we're still paying that. It's not like a one-time thing.
Right. These are not one-time, and I think the important piece of that is, because it isn't, it isn't coming from the one-time funds. That's where the differentials come in, because those are one-time funds, so.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Please, go right ahead.
Okay. The other thing that's important to know as a part of the... The other thing that's important to know as a part of the process is not only does this agreement expire at the end of June of next year, but any future compensation adjustments under this model need to have funding associated with them, right? And so we talked a little bit about how the funding was secured for these by utilizing vacant allocations and repurposing those funds. We don't want anyone to come away thinking that now we've got this process in place, we'll just periodically put positions through it and see what it spits out on the other side. That's not the intention at all. Really, this is a pilot. Positions identified in in this document. And again, we'll be revisiting this as we move forward to understand the results and the impacts and all of that. Okay, so the next section here identifies a concept called qualification factors. And this was developed really because as we looked at the market pay information for the positions that we identified as being critically short, if you think about bus driver, custodian, nutrition service worker one, and our paraprofessionals. When we went to market to look at the competition for that workforce and what market wages were versus what our wages are, what I discovered is that the greater the barrier to entry for position, so the the more skill or specialty that you must possess in order to be eligible to do the job, the greater the gap was between our wages and market. And so what we've done here is, let me back up, we don't want to we don't want to apply a one-size-fits-all solution in making these adjustments because the reverse of being below market is you're too far above market. And then people who maybe should leave can never leave because they can never go make that much money anywhere else, right? So we know some turnover in an organization is good, right? Not everybody is a fit for every role. But when you when you have employees who are locked into a position because they simply cannot go make that much money anywhere else with their current skill set, that that's a negative thing as well. So we wanted to, again, not have a one-size-fits-all solution, but really try to get to with our limited resources compensation that was on par with what we were seeing in the market. And so, again, looking at skill sets, when we looked at at positions where there was little to no barrier to entry, so most job seekers would be eligible for the position, we were about twenty percent off of what other employers in this area were are paying. For positions that require a little bit more skill, so like a CDL or maybe a specific one to two years of experience, that sort of thing, we're about twenty-five percent off. And so what we've done is we've utilized this qualification factor model to say we don't need to adjust the the housekeeping positions, for example, by twenty-five percent, because that gets us that gets us overmarket. But we do, we do know we need to adjust them about twenty percent. And so they would be qualification factor A, whereas a position like a bus driver that requires more specialized training would be qualification factor B. And so that those qualification factors, the twenty and twenty-five percent are are what the compensate, the base compensation increases amount to. And so you'll see, under qualification factor A, we begin making twenty percent adjustments at grade thirteen. And then the the factor or the the multiplier gets increasingly smaller as we go up in grades. So grades thirteen through twenty-one would receive some kind of an adjustment in this model as long as you're in one of the positions identified as CSCA eligible. So that's bucket one. And within bucket one, CSCA eligible, you're either gonna be adjusted by a factor of A, twenty percent, or a factor of B, twenty-five percent. Does that make sense? Okay.
Wait, I have a question.
Yes.
And so in factor A, excuse me, in factor A, everyone's gonna be adjusted by twenty percent.
Grades.
I mean, I'm sorry, in um, in, yeah, yeah, in factor A.
In factor A, grades thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen would be adjusted by twenty percent. Grade sixteen would be adjusted by fifteen.
And that's based upon the market and where that is, is up to twenty percent. Some we need it less to to close that gap.
Yes, exactly. So it's an analysis of market data, but then also we have to make sure to address what I talked about before, which is salary compression.
Compression.
Right? We have to keep a little bit of room between the steps still so that we don't create a situation where a grade twenty-two employee is making the same amount now as a grade seventeen employee, for example. Okay, so employees that are eligible for a CSCA adjustment would be eligible for that effective the first full pay period of the new year. So our fiscal year begins on July first of this year. And I mentioned before, based on the criteria, we identified positions that are eligible for a a critical shortage compensation adjustment. And then positions within that job series are also identified as eligible. Again, that is to help deal with some of the compression issues that we that we've talked about. And and when you think about a job series, these are positions that build on top of each other. So for example, you really can't be an effective dispatch technician without having been a bus driver. You can't be an effective behind-the-wheel instructor evaluator without having been a bus driver, and these folks are often the very first folks that are covering routes when we're short. So you'll see that these positions, these job titles that are listed in each of the groupings here have been identified for a critical shortage compensation adjustment using the factor model that we talked about above. I'm gonna pause for just a moment to talk about special education aides and assistants. We approached their change a little bit differently based on the market data that we uncovered. The current aide and assistants are mixed in among programs and levels, so between elementary, middle, and high, across programs, strategies, SIP, CLS, resource. We have everything from twenty hours up to forty hours. And we have a mixture of titles in terms of aide and assistant. And what positions are triggered right now is based entirely on student enrollment. And so what that has resulted in are, again, a lot of variations between levels and programs, but more importantly, if you're a teacher and you have an aide and an assistant, you are either working really hard to make sure that you're not having one of them do the other one's job, or you're like, I'm too busy for this, and you're both doing whatever I need, and then you've got people working out of class. So in an effort to get folks in these positions more hours, to increase the compensation, and to help streamline in terms of titles and functions, we've reclassified the special education aide and assistant positions. And so moving forward, all paraprofessionals assigned to a program, so our autism programs, comprehensive life skills, we call them our standalone programs. Those will be special education assistant positions. And those positions will be grades eighteen and nineteen as opposed to seventeen and eighteen right now. And then if you are a paraprofessional that is not assigned to a program, so maybe you're supporting resource students in a general education classroom, or you are a one-to-one aide for a student, those are going to be our aide positions moving forward. So aides are focused on non-program, assistants become focused on program staffing. And again, through some of this consolidation of allocations and changing of our staffing guidelines, we're able to increase the grade for the aide positions as well to a fifteen, sixteen from a thirteen, fourteen, I believe.
You have a question, I'm gonna jump in real quick. Vice President Nicolet, and then we'll go to trustee Mayberry.
Thank you. By the way, you're doing a wonderful job of explaining this. This is so complex, and I know you you and a team have spent multiple hours on this. But back to the assistant and the aide and program versus we could call generalist. So it really has to do with a level of ability, the service that you will be providing a student or classroom of students as as opposed to just, not just, generally providing support services to a teacher?
Sort of. So really, there's, I I would say the differentiation is more instructional in nature, right? So in our standalone programs, teacher assistants are gonna be providing curriculum support to teachers. And our one-to-one aides, and we really don't have very many resource aides, I'm gonna say it's probably two or three in the whole district, but our one-to-one aides are helping individual students to access the curriculum. So think about like tutoring versus personal care support, if that makes sense. Is that a fair, is that a fair description, Debbie? Okay.
I think the the clarification with instructional helped a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, Madam President. I think Vice President Nicolet, she asked a question I was gonna ask, just to clarify, it was program versus non-program. I think you you clarified that. But talking about aides, the personal care, we only have a handful of aides in the district. Is there a reason for that?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I should say we only have a handful of aides that are assigned to what we call a resource caseload. So they're not standalone programs. Generally, students who are receiving services under a resource model spend most of their day in the general education classroom. So by and large, our aides are assigned as one-to-one aides for students, and we do have a lot of those.
Good colleagues. Okay, please, go ahead.
Okay. So these are the positions that have been identified for that bucket one that we talked about with the base compensation increase under this agreement. So let's see, we talked about sped. Oh, the the other, the upside for the changes that we're making with sped, not only in terms of lessening confusion and having consistency across programs and levels, the the positions, the changes in staffing guidelines that we were able to make result in the increasing grades of the positions, but also the positions will have more hours and therefore will be benefits eligible. And so we we know that that's a huge factor in terms of recruiting employees to those roles.
Thank you. We're gonna jump right in again. Clerk Minetta?
Yes, and I just wanna say woo-hoo because that's, that should have been going on for a long time. I have a this might be a question that was already asked, but somehow it didn't go in my head. So all of the aides and assistants and all these people work with kids. They're not a teacher's aide, right? They're not, go make copies for me.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sure teachers could definitely use that help, but these are, these are, these are student supports.
Right.
Yes, absolutely.
No, I think that's a good question, but you're right, teachers would probably use any support we can get them, quite frankly, but good questions, okay.
Okay, so the next table that you see in the agreement identifies, breaks out the compensation by those three buckets that we talked about earlier. So base compensation adjustment, on average, again, it the amount or the factor that we're utilizing to do the base compensation adjustment varies by the grade of the position. But on average, it's about a three thousand five hundred dollar annual adjustment, and then those employees would also be eligible for a two thousand dollar retention incentive, which is an extension of what we did this year with the incentive pilot that you all approved before. Then in bucket two, so that's employees that are not base compensation adjustment eligible, but they are in the big four. Those employees will be eligible for a one-time differential of three thousand dollars and then a retention incentive of two thousand dollars. And all other ESPs would be eligible for a one-time differential of three thousand dollars under this agreement. From a process perspective, we'd be looking to pay out the the differential in November for everyone who's currently employed and everyone who secures employment with us in the new school year and works a minimum of ninety days prior to the November payment. And then we'll do another payment at the end of the year for those one-time differentials to catch everybody else up that has been hired since or or reached their ninety days since then. The new hire incentives, the retention incentives, and the referral incentives that I mentioned before are an extension of the programs that we had in place this year. We really just kind of replicated the same milestones in terms of, you know, when folks are eligible for payment and how much payment they are eligible for. But you'll see under new hire incentives, there's up to two thousand dollars in funding available for new hires. And within the transportation area, they get five hundred dollars of that for completion of training, five hundred dollars at six months, and then an additional thousand dollars at twelve. And then you can see the breakdown there for housekeeping, nutrition services, and our sped paraprofessionals, two two payments, one at six months and one at twelve. Among the retention incentives, you'll see the payment schedule there as well. We had slated for five hundred, five hundred, and a thousand. I know that a couple of the trustees had suggestions to consolidate that into two payments and do one before the holidays and then one at the end of the year. I did talk to the association, and they are agreeable to that approach as well. They didn't have any heartburn over that. They thought before the holidays made a lot of sense. So if you all take action to approve this agreement, we should make that notation as well, if that's the pleasure of the board. And then the
So that would, I'm sorry, that would just, so that would need to be reflected because that was after this was, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
And then the referral incentives, so employees who refer someone to be a bus driver, people transportation assistant, refer any new hire in housekeeping or nutrition services, or refer a paraprofessional, special education aide or assistant, are eligible for a referral incentive. And we are also going to open this up, again, pending approval of this agreement. We will open it up to the other associations as well so that they can refer into these roles. This school year, it was only ESPs referring other ESPs. But we'd like to expand it to our other associations as well, and we bring those MOUs forth at the next meeting. And then the last bullets are a lot of legal language about non-precedent setting and all of that. We put all of that all of our agreements. So some tentative information was provided to employees because we wanted to make them aware of this consideration prior to them leaving for the summer. We did let them know, of course, that everything is very much contingent upon Board of Trustees' approval, but I did a town hall meeting with about forty-five ESPs last Friday, which I felt like was a great turnaround because it was like twenty-four hour notice. And then we're gonna do another one on June twenty-first that will give folks an opportunity to ask questions. There seemed to be a a healthy mix of folks from each bucket at that first town hall, so I'm looking forward to that for the second one as well. And then, of course, pending approval, we have Katie Delone and our talent acquisition team have put together their recruiting plan for how to get the word out about these changes so that we can really leverage these increases as a part of the recruiting process. And then knowing that this is is fairly complex and kind of detail-intensive material, many employees will be receiving individual communication on their situation so that they understand which of the three buckets they fall into. And then there are some employees who are impacted by what we call overage. We might need to move them into other roles. Luckily, we have plenty of positions for everyone, so no one no one will will lose a position, but there is a little bit of movement that we need to do to accommodate the the staffing guideline changes that we made, so.
Just have a couple of questions. Thank you for that. Excuse me, one is, let's go to the overage a little bit. So if someone is overage and they move from one to the other, could they change buckets, and then how would that impact them?
So no.
Actually, no, because it's such a critical shortage, no one's getting out of those buckets.
Yes. So if you're already in a bucket, you're in a bucket. But these movements will really just be custodians being assigned to other custodial positions, and then our special education paraprofessional movement. So some aides will become assistants. I don't think I have any assistants becoming aides. And then a handful of folks will need to move schools because of changes to program staffing.
The other question, thank you for that. The other question is, what was, it sounds like you had a great turnout on the on the virtual meeting, so people could ask, so thank you for doing that. What kind of, what did you, how did you, how would you read their reaction? How was it received? Can you give us a little something like that?
Yeah, absolutely. I I I'll admit, I was nervous. Right? This is very different than anything we've ever done before. And we know that all of our employees are And we know that all of our employees are feeling the pressures of inflation. Overall, it was very positive. I mean, there were definitely questions about why, for example, employees in the big four who aren't in the critical shortage positions would be eligible for a retention incentive. As I shared with all of you earlier, those are often the folks that are the first to be pulled to cover for these vacancies. And we know that the, the strength of those departments going into the next school year is really critical in order for us to be successful. So, you know, good questions. I think, I think everyone in this organization really feels the, the pain of not being able to transport kids to school, right? I think everybody feels the pain of inflation, and we all have our personal finance situations, but I did, I did really get a sense that employees are very sensitive to the impact that these issues are having on kids.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. Dr. Nikolat?
Yes, thank you. I suspect you have a pretty good sense of the number of employees this in general will impact as far as base pay, incentive, yeah, differentiation.
I probably should have that. I can get that for you before we're done. I might need to phone a friend.
Okay. Thank you, please. I'm sorry, trustee Church?
No, I'll wait till the end.
Okay.
I'm just entertaining questions.
Oh, this is weird, this is it. You're there.
Okay, well, yeah. Thank you very much. Now, being, even today, as I speak, we're speaking off the cuff, and you made a comment off the cuff. I just want to correct what I think I heard, that when it comes to these issues, that everybody wants to quote, "pay them more," I just want to put on the record, I don't. I just put that on the record, that doesn't represent me, for the record. Okay, so let's go into the questions. We have a contract with this group, WESP, and how long was that contract for, before this came up?
That contract was through the end of fiscal year '23. So it was a two-year agreement, '21 to '23.
Okay. And then who made the decision to ask to reopen the contract?
You all took action to direct staff to reopen the contract.
Okay, so the district did.
No, no, the board did.
The board, the board.
Yes, the board did.
On behalf, yeah, acting, yes, I got it. But no, it wasn't, they didn't come to us and say, hey, we want to reopen this.
No.
The big question, what is the cost per year? Have we, have we, if we're voting on it, what's it going to cost us?
I don't have the staff report with me, but it is in the staff report.
And I looked, I didn't see it. Maybe if anybody saw it, tell me, but while you're looking for that.
I need my.
There comes the expert. Oh, thank you. And while he's taking his seat, Mr. Mathers, we have, we previously did cost incentives, for example, for bus drivers. Were those successful?
I would say that the incentives on the new hire side of the house were successful. We were able to recruit 26% more bus drivers this year than we have in previous years. I would say that the retention incentives, based on one year of data, were not successful. We were not able to gain ground in terms of those 74 helping to net us additional head count. We really were able to maintain for the year perhaps a little bit backwards. So I think you ask a great question. I think it's worth sharing with, with the board that we wrestled a lot with the return on investment concept and whether or not to continue with the incentives. I think the challenge is that there's no one solution that's going to solve the whole problem, right? And so from an optics perspective, how do you discontinue a new hire or retention incentive in an area where you're still experiencing crisis-level shortages? And also, you know, it's a little difficult on the retention side to predict where it did have an impact, right? Because nobody ever calls to tell us they were going to quit, but they didn't because of the money. So hopefully, it will help to stabilize a bit.
On that bus driver.
I'm sorry, can I follow up on just that piece, I think? Were you still there, trustee Church, or?
No, I'm on the bus driver.
Okay, okay, as a whole, I think that, one, I think that's a great question, and when we were able to talk about this, you shared some data on that as well. I think that that's one of the reasons why I think it's important to talk about their base compensation, because that's a longer term, and it'd be interesting to see as we take a look a year from now, as you said, what kind of impact did it have and so on, because that in and of itself is different than I get a one-time bonus. I mean, the one-time stuff is good, don't get me wrong, but it's, this is my ongoing all-the-time pay. And so I'm hoping that that has a greater impact on people's, you know, month-to-month, because it happens during that time. Go ahead, trustee Church.
Thank you. My recollection is we lost ground. My recollection is, once we offered the incentives, the number of vacancies increased to the point where we had to cut services. Am I missing, am I incorrect on that?
No, I believe you're correct.
Okay, all right. There was some discussion, either formally or behind closed doors with various staff members and myself, regarding reaching out to UNR or other universities for research on recruiting and housing. Do you recall that? And I'm not trying to play gotcha, I'm just trying to, this is so important.
Yeah, absolutely. I remember those discussions you brought up at several meetings.
Did we ever reach out to UNR for that research?
No, I haven't had an opportunity to do that at this point. I'm not really sure exactly what research I would be asking them for either, so perhaps we could have a side conversation about that.
Do we have any internal, ongoing, comprehensive research, formal, somebody looking into housing research as a way to address this?
No, we don't have the resources in this district to get into housing development.
In your professional opinion, if we do this, will it be successful?
I believe it's an absolutely necessary step at this point. We are so far behind market in these student-serving positions that it would be irresponsible not to take some action to attempt to address it.
I agree, some action, some action I do agree with. How will we evaluate it after the one year, or 2023?
Well, the same metrics I think we would normally use in terms of new hire activity and retention activity.
All righty. And then for the expert that just sat down, Mr. Mathers, how are we going to fund this? And do we have funding? And how much is it going to cost?
Sure, so the general fund cost of the.
Would you like to identify yourself for the record, please, sir?
Sorry, Madam President. Mark Mathers, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you.
So the general fund cost of the base salary adjustments for those critical shortage compensation adjustments is 2.4 million net of the staffing and service level reductions we made. And we had identified savings by looking at historical spending in operating budgets and in other places to cover that. So that is a sustain, those are sustainably funded in the general fund for housekeeping, transportation, and special aides and assistants that receive the bulk of their funding from the general fund. The one-time differentials and retention signing and referral bonuses, the cost of all of those, including for ESP employees not in the big four departments, is 7.5 million. But, and because those are one-time costs, they're funded by one-time ESER or stimulus funding. So the total, again, total general fund cost for three out of the big four departments that are funded by the general fund, the total salary adjustment, which are sustainably funded, is 2.4, and then the one-time is seven and a half. For nutrition services, you can see there in the financial section, the base pay adjustments for nutrition services, and again, all of this is assuming no vacancies, fully filling all positions is 1.1, and that can be done out of our nutrition services fund. And then the incentives in the nutrition services fund are a little under $800,000.
2.4, 2.4 million per year?
Annual cost, yep, 2.4 million per year. But again, we identified savings in the budget process to cover that. So net-net is, you know, there was $0 changed in the general fund budget, so we can continue to fund that. Yes, sir.
Okay. And so if, if the employee union association gets a 5% pay increase, do these incentives go up 5%?
So that's another part of the reason that we put an expiration on the term of the agreement, because those are the kinds of language questions that are going to come up between now and then that we'll need to work through.
And then for Ms. Ellison, I think, are you familiar with the Brookings Institute, University of Las, University of Nevada, those other folks, the Rebels, Las Vegas, on housing affordability that came out?
I've seen a variety of studies from the Brookings Institute. I don't know if I know specifically which study you're referring to, but.
Try to find that, just because it's important.
Is it though?
Dated 6/7/2022, Housing Affordability for Top Occupations in Nevada Metro, 2022.
I don't know if I've read that particular study.
Okay. The only thing I want to point out on that, well, there's a lot, it's a good report, but I wanted, I just wanted to point out one of the quotes in there. "In the Reno metro area, 6 of 7 most common occupations do not earn income needed to afford rent for a studio apartment." So I'll save my comments for the end. I think that answers all, unless you want me to ask and make them now, but I'll, I'll save my.
No, it's totally up to you.
I'll wait, I'll wait. And I know there's other questions, but I appreciate your answering the ones that I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee Church. We're going to pause for just a moment. I did not ask for public comment. Do we have public comment on this, JJ? Okay, thank you. Trustee Smith?
Thank you so much, President Taylor. A couple of things. One, I also would like to be on the record, but in my case, I'd like to be on the record that I would like to pay our staff more, so want to be clear about that. Two, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Mathers for just pretty much rereading what's already in the overview right here, which I found to be really, really helpful. I definitely share the interest about housing. I will say, though, that I think that's outside the scope of what this agreement is, but I do believe that by paying people more, that would generally mean that they're able to pay their rent or their mortgage or other things. So I am very much a supporter of the issue of staff housing in the area, but by paying people more, it generally allows them to meet those rent or mortgage obligations. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Smith. And what I, what I would say, as we have the conversation here, is I am, I too, I do think we need to, you know, better compensate our folks, in particular in the, in the area, in those critical needs areas, and also in particular during the season that we're in with the, not only the tremendous labor shortage, but also the high level of inflation. I mean, the reality of it is, is our job is to serve students. Our job is to serve students, and these are in direct student service positions. And when we, when we aren't able to recruit and retain good people, some come in with skills, some have fewer barriers, as you said, but nonetheless, they're all there for the students. And when we aren't able to do that, how we're able to serve our students is impacted, as we saw during the, with the horrible decisions that we made around the transportation, around transportation. And so what I'm hoping is that things like this allows us, prevents us from having to do those kinds of things. Again, kids need to get to school. They need to have lunch, they need to have aides, the buildings need to be clean, they need to be safe, warm, and dry. I mean, those are things that are critical. I mean, this isn't, hey, let's just do this because it feels good. This is, how are we taking care of our, how are we serving our kids? How are we teaching our kids as we look at our, and we haven't, we're on that yet, but as we, as we begin to look at things that impact our teachers and so on. I mean, this, this is, this is the critical, to me, this is the critical base level of what we do. And so the fact that we're able to, between ESER funds and between doing some creative budgeting and moving and so on and so forth, and the general fund, the fact that we're able to come up with $10 million to say, hey, you know, we want to, it isn't all that we might like to do as a whole, right? I'll say, I say might, because it may not be unanimous, right? And I want to certainly make room for that. Might like to do as a whole, but this shows that we, we see what's going on, we understand that it's, it's a difficult, and this is not even talk about the two years, the last two years everyone's been through, that work here. And something we can't, we can't do anything to get any of that back. And then you put on top of that, and, you know, our neighbor in the South making the decisions that they made. Now, in the long term, who knows how it's going to bear out, but, you know, moving from Reno to Vegas is not something that's that unusual. So I think it's important to show our very hard-working employees that are in direct service to our students in one way or another, that we value what you do, and we are working to do all that we can to help, to help. So I appreciate the $10 million effort, so to speak, and I certainly want to, want to say that I'm, I will be supporting this agenda item. Look forward to other creative things that we can do to help serve our kids.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Too, I want to thank, thank the staff for what they brought, and, you know, the idea to be able to pay our staff and our support, or pay our staff more is, I guess, a bare minimum, is part of being a trustee, is being trusted to take care of our staff. And just recently, the, was the median home price now over $600,000? It's crazy. So the idea of to not be supporting the idea of paying our staff more, it's ridiculous to me. So, you know, with that said, I would make a motion.
Okay, I think, I think trustee Church, you had some other things you wanted to say, or did we cover you, sir?
Oh, no, we didn't.
I don't want, I don't want to cut that off, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and then I'll come right back to you for the motion.
Because I might want to make an amendment motion or something, I'll explain.
Well, there's no motion yet, so.
I got it, I got it.
I also have a question. I have answered a Dr. Nikolat's question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Oh, you have, okay. I said I'd go back to you before, so I wanted you to do that before we have the motion. Then we'll have the motion, and there can be further discussion.
The bottom line is, we absolutely want to compensate our people. We absolutely want to solve this problem. The question is how. And obviously, I've expressed the opinion that I don't think it's going to be successful just offering pay. I have heard, and this is excellent discussion, because I have heard from my fellow trustees that they are too concerned about housing. And so I want to make a, a motion, and we'll see where it flies, to beg my trustees, because we are interested in this, to include a provision in the contract, as much as legally this is the motion, include a provision in the amended contract to say, as legally maybe phrased by, by HR, "Nothing herein prohibits the district from offering housing or housing incentives above compensation listed herein," end quote. In other words, just put it in there. It doesn't say we're going to do it, doesn't say we're not going to do it, but if that issue were to come up, we don't have to re-negotiate and reopen the contract. So again, it would be to put in a provision to say, "Nothing herein prohibits the district from offering housing or housing incentives above the compensation listed herein," end quote. That's my motion.
So I guess your motion is to, is to make that a part of whatever motion comes forward? Is that done?
Exactly.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't think we can do that. The notice for this agenda item is to approve it, so you can approve it or you can disapprove it. We don't have notice to the public that we might be amending the MOU. So the, the agenda item is to approve or not, not to amend the particular MOU. So the mechanics to get to an amendment would have to be a vote to disapprove with instructions about what further is needed or needed to be negotiated, but with this agenda item, I don't believe that motion can be done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hall. I guess my other question would be, I thought I heard that we were going to do an amendment anyway, there was some little minor provision in there that wasn't on the agenda. Can you clarify that?
Yeah, a suggestion had come forward that would change the pay dates for the retention incentive, but if we need to do that as a disapproval and then go get a new agreement with the association, we can certainly do that.
Or it could be an amendment after the fact. It could be either way.
Oh, yeah.
So it could be approved, and then that could come up after? And then that could come up after, as well, trustee Church?
But as noticed, I just don't think we can amend the MOU with this notice.
With the, yeah, because it did say, it didn't say to review or to consider, it said to approve or not approve. And so that means those are the two options we have. Yeah, okay, certainly. Okay, so we're back to trustee Rodriguez, you want to make a motion, sir? And then we have a couple of comments, and then trustee Mayberry wants to make one?
Dr. Nikolat, can I answer?
Oh, please, yeah, thank you. An answer for Dr. Nikolat.
Yeah, Dr. Nikolat, so your question was, how many people are in each bucket? I don't have all three buckets, but I have two buckets. So there are about 1,000 people who are eligible for a base compensation increase, and then there are about 2,000 people that are in the other two buckets.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll look for a motion then from trustee Rodriguez, and if there's a second to that motion, we'll have further discussion, because I want to recognize trustee Mayberry. Trustee Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the MOU between the Washoe County School District and the Washoe County, or, excuse me, Washoe Education Support Professionals, WESP, regarding compensation adjustments to address a critical labor shortage in transportation, housekeeping, nutrition services departments, and among special education aides and assistants to include base compensation adjustments, one-time differentials, and a new hire referral. one-time differentials, and a new hire referral and retention incentives.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Trust, motion on the floor from Trustee Rodriguez, seconded from Trustee Mayberry. Discussion, Trustee Mayberry?
I just wanted to also echo what most of my colleagues have said about the agreement. I appreciate the help, the strong work. I think we'd be advocating our responsibility. If we didn't do something, then we'd be starting the, the new school year with, with less. And I particularly appreciate your work and your efforts on our teacher assistance and aides that will benefit our special, special needs population. So thank you very much.
Appreciate that, Dr. Mayberry. Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is for the approval of this agenda item, Agenda Item three point zero six. Okay, seeing none. And it's not to say that we, we can look for something else to come forward for that, and that can, I'll, I'll say this, I said, okay, that, we can do that on consent, I would imagine. Because that's a small change. It isn't, it isn't substantive, so we should be able to do that as well. Okay, all right. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, the motion carries. Let the record show it is six to one. And also, let the record show, just before you leave, one, Superintendent McNeil joined us about twenty, thirty minutes ago and wants to make some comments.
Thank you very much, President Taylor. Well, I truly appreciate the board's support on this. This is one of the most important decisions that, that you all have made recently. I mean, you all have made some very important decisions, but this one is very important to our employees for all the reasons that you all have articulated today. So I just want to thank the board for the support of this. I also want to thank Emily and Mark and Pete and Scott Lee and WESP for working so collaboratively together. We just don't throw MOAs together. There's a lot of work that has to go into this to make sure that we have all the i's literally dotted and the t's crossed. But I want to thank everybody, long nights, long weekends, for all the effort so that we can get this approved. So thank you.
Thank you. And I would also like to say, I'd like to thank, thank WESP, thank the association. This is a very different way of looking at how compensation has been done in the past. And I think it's going to be important to do creative things that we haven't ordinarily done, and some of which have been discussed, and their willingness to, you know, get outside the comfort zone and the safety of what is usually done to, to move forward. And help is probably going to be required as we continue to go forward. So certainly, if they're listening, we certainly want to thank them as well. Okay, all right. Thanks to you both. All right, we're, we're going to take a ten-minute break. We have a little bit of business we need to take care of, so let's take a ten-minute recess right now, and then we will be right back here. Thank you, everybody. All right, everyone, thank you for that, for your indulgence as we had what turned out to be a lengthy recess. So we are, I'm going to call us back to order, and we're going to jump back to Agenda Item one, three point zero, three point zero one, three point zero one. This is discussion on the budget and schedule for the Debbie Smith Career Technical Education, CTE Academy, High School, and possible action to move to a phased delivery approach to respond to construction market, market pricing as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee for a possible action. But there is going, there is some disclaimers, I believe, that need to happen around this. We're going to start with Trustee Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. About an hour ago, some things came to light coming from Trustee Church. And this is going to be permanent, I have abundance of caution. I would like to see about postponing or pushing back whatever we need to do. Agenda items three point zero one, zero two, zero three, zero seven, zero eight, zero nine. Trustee Church brought up some concerns regarding donations I may, I may have received during my campaign. I unfortunately do not carry a list of all my donors with me, and I don't have the means to access them right now. And I'm not sure if this is something that even needs to happen. I don't know if this is something that's normal or typical of city councils or county commissions, but I don't believe I would be voting on anything wrongly. But so it's, I have a bunch, I have a bunch of caution that we postponed these items, because I, I don't have the means to check to see who all my donors are.
Okay, I appreciate that. Trustee Mayberry, thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Mayberry?
Yeah, no, I want to echo that. I, I, I'm in the same position. I think it's unfortunate that somebody brought these allegations, you know, less than an hour or so before the meeting. A lot of important business is going to get slowed down as a result, so I'm unfortunately in the same position. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Mayberry.
I would second that.
If you could, please, the microphone.
I would second that if that's a movement.
Is that, is that a motion? There could be. I mean, certainly, would you like to make that a motion, Trustee Rodriguez?
I don't like to, but I feel that I'm, I'm kind of put in a hard position. And I, I think this is awful that this is happening and that we've got postponed constructions. And things of that nature for our schools and our students, but I'm, I'm against the wall here. So yes, I would make that a motion, that'd be postpone these items.
Okay, I appreciate that. There is a motion on the floor that Agenda Items, well, you want to give this to me one more time, sir?
Postpone nine items, three point zero one, zero two, zero three, zero seven, zero eight, and zero nine.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. We will have further discussion, but we need to have a second first before we can. Is there, there's?
I'll second that, thank you.
Trustee Mayberry, then I, I'm going to take this opportunity to, to do the same thing, because any of us running for office at this point have had campaign contributions. And I would, I will say, I will say this, many of, I don't have access to the information with all of my campaign supporters as, as well, but any, any, any support, as much as I appreciate any of the campaign support that I may have gotten from my campaign, those that, that needed to be reported were reported in a timely fashion, and they, that happens once a quarter, and that will continue to go forward. But, you know, on the advice of, of council and in the abundance of, and out of an abundance of caution, I do want to be able to have that information upfront, so I can share that. It, it pains me to do so. I do think that if you, if you, with, with a deeper, a deeper reading of NRS, it's really, it's, in my opinion, and based upon the, the advice of council, no one's gotten a whole huge, a lot, lot of money based upon what the statute requires. So it would, it would not be a requirement, but I think in the environment that we're all in, ask me how I know, it's, it's the best thing is just to be careful and to be cautious and to make sure that any, anything that could be called into question, because it will be, that we may, that we remain above board, but it, it saddens me, because there are, there are projects that need to go forward in this vein. And, exactly, I got, I got the email at eleven o'clock this morning, and then I was working, then passed it on to council, and it's kind of been a mad scramble since then, for what's the best way to deal with this, to conduct the district's business, to see if we have, if we need to make any disclosures and what that should include. And if that be the case, from my standpoint, I need a complete list just to make sure, and I don't have access to that at this time. So I'm, I'm in the ballpark, I will, so I will very reluctantly, very reluctantly support the motion. Trustee Smith?
Thank you, President Taylor. Yeah, unfortunately, I have to echo the sadness of many of my colleagues here from the dais. I need to be able to do a thorough review of my contributions. And for the record, I would like everyone to know that this ethics complaint or potential violation or concern came to me at two twenty PM while we were in the middle of a meeting. Had any of this been brought prior, I would have absolutely had this information ready so that we could move forward. And it's very unfortunate that we need to pause this, this series of decisions. And I sincerely hope that we can mitigate the impact to our schools and our children and our staff as a result of this. I would also like to add that I would be interested, and if there is going to be a negative impact, that we consider possibly a special meeting. My priority is our schools, our kids, our staff. I would like to get back to this as soon as possible, as soon as we have had the opportunity to do our review of our contributions. But it pains me to delay these decisions by one minute, because again, my focus is on our children, our staff, and our community and our schools. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Trustee, Trustee Smith, Council?
I think we need to be clear on the motion. Is the motion to postpone this until the next board meeting?
Or to the, the earliest opportunity, perhaps, if we say that?
Yeah, that would be.
That's the good, that's the better idea. That way, if there is a special meeting or something, is that what you're?
That's exactly.
Can that be a friendly?
Would you like, if you, if you accept that as a friendly, Trustee Mayberry, you accept that as a friendly?
I will indeed. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I think, and I think it's really important, me personally, as well as as the president of the board, it's, it's not about trying to not disclose things that should be disclosed. I don't think anyone's intention is that this is my third election since I've been on this board. That's never, ever been the issue. Is that the, the disappointment to me is that it doesn't fall within what's required by statute. But because, I'll just be very honest, you go through a potential recall, such as I did, and, and people watch everything that I do, and it's, I do not want to put the board through something else like that. I do not want to put the district through something else like that, even though it seems fairly clear from my review and then from the review of council that there, there, there are no potential violations, there are no violations here. But I applaud my colleagues for, because that's, that's my own PTSD, I guess, right? But I applaud my colleagues for saying, you know what, we, we can't take the chance for the district, just the drama behind it, in it. So I love the abundance of caution. Again, I applaud my colleagues for doing that. It's just extremely disappointing, because it's, it's, it's time and effort that is, is probably not necessary, but it's, it's prudent. It's prudent at this time, so. Seeing no further discussions? Oh, 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 what?
Discussion, yes.
Oh, discussion, okay. Your lights not on, sir?
No, we moved to discussion, sorry.
Well, yeah, we've been discussing after the motion.
Okay, thank you very much. For the record, Trustee Church, my name came up very specifically during this, mentioned by name, unfortunately. I want to make it clear, nobody's alleging, that I know of, any violation of the law. This is to be safe. I want to make clear that, number one, I was sick for the last week, didn't get back into action until a couple of days ago. Based on communications with members of the community, I did some research into the issue at hand on disclosures and passed it on at eleven AM today, finished it up literally right before I sent it. And I want to make really clear, this is not my job. It's not, it's legal's job, not necessarily Mr. Hall, but the entire school district's legal job to make sure that we comply with the ethics law and the Nevada statute two eighty-one A. That's not my job to make, to watch you. That's their job. And it's your job to know what you're supposed to do and what you're not supposed to do. And for those people that blame me, shame on you. I think I should be thanked, because by bringing it to the attention of council and by you making the prudent decision today, we'll get to it as soon as we can, but we've avoided a potential ethics complaint or issue that could hurt you in your campaigns, could hurt you in your private life, could hurt your professional life. So I did what was right. I did what was prudent, and it wasn't my job to do it. It wasn't, it should have been already understood what you, as candidates or as trustees, have to disclose. So the fact that I brought it up, don't kill the messenger. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. I feel compelled to respond to that. This isn't about not knowing what my responsibilities are as a trustee. It's not about not knowing what my responsibilities are as a candidate. I know what they are. I know what the law states, but I also know the environment that we're in and all of what I already said. That's why I'm saying I'm in support of this, not because I think there's something there. There's no there there. I've just been down the no there there road. I recognize it. But the price that happens when you go down that road, time, energy, effort, is costly on the district. And when you have five of us, it's extremely costly on the district, which costs, which costs the kids, which costs the teachers, which costs the very people that we're here to serve. So because of that, it's not not knowing what my responsibilities are. I know how much I'm watched. Be here for one second, you will know how much you're watched. So I take complete offense to that. That is not the case. The case is that people reach for things because they're looking for things and make something when there's nothing there but to say, oh, then that requires the effort, the time and the resources to disprove something that's not proven. That's the unfortunate thing. Trustee Smith?
Thank you. I would also like to add into the record that the document that Trustee Church sent specifically calls out that June fourteenth is election day and four incumbents are running. And the majority of this document does center around the fact that today is election day, and this is a political issue.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. I do think that's noteworthy.
President Taylor, may I say something as a superintendent for my staff? It actually is not the Office of General Counsel's responsibility, nor is it Board Council's. They do not relegate campaign finances. I want to put that on the record.
As I said, it's my responsibility as a candidate. It's my responsibility as a trustee. There is a motion on the floor. There's a second, Trustee Rodriguez?
I just want to, Madam President, ask a call for a vote.
Okay, we'll do that. Before we do, do we have any public comment on this? We do not? Okay, so there's a call for a question on the floor. The question is to, to postpone until the earliest possible opportunity, Agenda Item three point zero one, three point zero two, three point zero three, three point zero seven, three point zero eight, and three point zero nine. We've had discussion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion carries. Let the record show it is unanimous. Okay, so that means we are left with Agenda Item three point zero four. I do want to mention for the record that incoming Superintendent Dr. Enfield is joining us. She's not on camera. She had a medical procedure, but she did want to make sure, she let me know that she is in, that she is in attendance for this meeting. So I want the record to reflect that as well. Okay, Agenda Item three point zero four, presentation to provide an update on the Incline High School expansion study funded by the Dave and Cheryl Duffield Foundation, and possible action to approve an agreement with the Dave and Cheryl Duffield Foundation to fund the related design and construction improvements at Incline High School for up to thirty-eight million, three hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. And this is absolutely for possible action. And so, Ms. Golden, you're here with us?
I am.
All right, Director of Design and Planning, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. We originally had Peter Grove to present with me today, but he was not able to make it. But I've got this, so I'll cover this for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me. Again, Teresa Golden, Director of Design of the Washoe County School District. Very happy to be here today to present this project. I could easily say this is probably going to be the funnest item on the agenda today. So I'm glad.
It is so far. I can tell you that.
I'm glad to present it that way. So I'm going to just, going to start out with a little bit of history that we have with the Duffield Foundation, and then go over the scope and the drawings of our conceptual design, and then review the budget and the schedule. So the Dave and Cheryl Duffield Foundation have been great partners with the Washoe County School District for some time. They have provided generous funding over the years for a number of things, but specifically some education programs, staff augmentations, and capital projects throughout the years. And the most recent one was the renovation of the Incline High School Theater Project that we did with Incline Boosters. It was finished about a year and a half ago, and it's really quite a successful project. So I'm really excited to be able to have another partnership with them and see this project through completion. The Duffields approached us in the, in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one with the potential ideas on a project for replacement of the football field and the track and all of the accessory buildings that go along with it, as well as some thoughts about doing a student hub and some other programmatic spaces that would require an expansion at the school. So we decided to hire Collaborative Design Studio to do an assessment and conceptual drawings for us. And when I say we, the Duffield Foundation also funded that conceptual study. The study was completed about a month ago, and so that's what we're going to review now. So what we're calling Phase One of the scope is the track and field project. The field, like I said, will replace the football field with a new artificial turf field, and mainly because of the, the weather conditions up there really cause for an artificial turf field. It will be easier to maintain. We'll install a new eight-lane regulation track with all the accessories. And then we're going to expand the bleachers and include a new athletic weight room, lockers, snack shack, et cetera.
It's going to be so cool.
And this is a site plan showing the field. Location-wise, nothing really is changing except for the location of the stands, and I'm just going to go into the next slide, which is a little bit bigger that zooms in on that. And it shows the location of the new lockers, all on the east side, I believe. And then it also includes a new athletic weight room. It'll be a two-story building on the, on, you see on the right-hand side with the storage athletic. hand side with the storage, athletic storage below that with, uh, locker rooms. And, uh, basically a new access to the field in the center between the locker, or excuse me, between the stands. And then we are planning on providing a secondary entrance and exit to that field as well, really for, um, safety reasons. Phase two of the project, um, is going to demolish the ROTC building. And I'm going to just go back to that site, first site plan. So that little area you see in the blue there is the existing, um, sorry, that is not the existing ROTC building. It is not shown here. But, uh, it is shown in dashed. It's kind of hard to see. But by that blue area, the dashed, uh, building is the ROTC building. So that will be demolished. And then the blue area is the area of the new expansion of the building itself. So we will, uh, demolish the ROTC building and, um, on floor one of the new plan, we'll be adding, um, two new classrooms that will be for ROTC as well as the, um, new shooting rifle range, um, on that floor as well. Uh, floor two will include a new dance studio, a culinary kitchen, a restaurant, and, um, a repurposed home economic space. And then floor three of the expansion, um, will have group study rooms, places for, um, collaboration, for student collaboration and presentation space. So this is the floor plan showing the first floor where the ROTC, um, space will be as well as the two additional classrooms. And this is all on the west end of the building. So, um, you'll see also that there's a, a deck and overhang that you'll see on that west side, um, that you'll be able to probably not on this level, but on the second and third level, be able to kind of see over the, um, the field. So this is the second level where you see the new culinary kitchen space, um, and a restaurant, um, that the students will assist in serving. And, um, again, the dance studio is shown on the right as well as an additional classroom and that, that deck overhang. Oh, also in the blue, you'll see on sort of the bottom right are, that is what is the existing, uh, home economic space that they'll be converting into regular classrooms. And then the third grand floor with the great view, um, over into the fields is the, uh, what we're calling the new student hub. So again, it's got that collaborative space with, um, private, uh, study areas, small up to large, and, um, also can be used for, and I would say the main, main purpose for a lot of this project, and the student hub mainly is for community use as well. So just not the students, but the community as well. We anticipate we'll use this space. So these are just some 3D images showing the expansion. So the top, um, drawing there that you see is actually the front of the school. And if you sort of see that red dash line on the top left, that is the area of the expansion. Um, on the bottom drawing, that area of expansion is shown right there on the front there with all the windows that you see.
You can really see the view.
Yeah.
How the view's gonna be there. Yeah.
So part of Collaborative Design Studio's task was to help us come up with a construction estimate. So our, our overall conceptual project budget is approximately $38 million for this project. Um, we are hoping to dive right into design, um, hopefully if we get approvals today, um, with bidding next spring and starting construction May of 2023, and then a total project completion of fall of 2024. So the next steps are approval of the, uh, agreement with the Dave and Cheryl Duffield Foundation. Um, this includes all funding for the design phase and the construction phase of this project. Um, the total amount is 38, let me get there, million 302,742. We are asking for approval as part of this agenda item today. The next item, uh, that we would like to see approved is the design contrast, contract with, uh, design, Collaborative Design Studio, uh, which is next on the agenda. And then we will be bringing the construction contracts, uh, back to this board, uh, next spring for approvals before moving forward, um, next spring. And that is it. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. Listen, we do have a couple of public comment cards. Why don't we take those first and then we'll go to questions or comments.
Tierney Cahill.
Principal Cahill, welcome.
I brought presents. I don't have my cookies. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll bring those next time.
Don't, don't, don't tease us now.
I'm the proud principal of Incline High School. I'm Tierney Cahill, home of the mighty Highlanders. And, um, I just want to express my deep, um, sincere gratitude to Mr. and Mrs. Duffield for their generosity to the community. I think we all know schools are, um, a hub in the community and a place where the community gathers. And we do vaccinations, we do all kinds of service, um, within our community. We're a very important, um, place for our community. So this type of investment is truly remarkable and, um, unbelievable generosity. Um, I can't, thank you doesn't really seem enough to Mr. and Mrs. Duffield, um, of how grateful we are. Uh, I do want to point out my new dear friend, the executive director of the Duffield Foundation, Mr. Jim Dougdale, who is here with us today.
Let's, let's, let's give him a.
And it's his birthday.
Oh, and he's here with us.
He is here with us. I mean, boy, so generous. Um, you know, the Duffields have a history of philanthropy and, um, a true heart for children and for animals and veterans. And I just think they're such a special people. Um, if you've ever visited our school and seen our beautiful Duffield Theater that we are tremendously grateful for. That is just a wonderful place for all kinds of academic excellence. Um, we have a new scoreboard out on our football field that we're very proud of. And, um, their investment in our academics is truly what I think pushes us to where we want to be for all children in helping us, um, staff fully and, um, invest in our teachers and professional development. So I just really, um, cannot thank them enough and really want you all to know how grateful we are and how lucky we are, I think, as Washoe County Schools to have, um, such a lovely family care so much about our children and each and every single child. So I handed you out our motto for this year, which is, um, be ridiculously excellent. And that is our goal at Incline High School, to be ridiculously excellent for every single child. Um, I do think it's, um, we're often misunderstood. We have a large, um, title population. We have, um, many, many, um, kids with different needs that, uh, come to us. And we're just so grateful for this investment in all children. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you, Principal Cahill.
John Appolito.
Welcome back, Mr. Appolito.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to say thank you to the Duffield Foundation also. I only have, uh, kids, two, one more year at the high school. And, um, it's incredible how much, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Duffield have donated to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
That's all I have. Okay. Let's bring it right back here to the table. Thank you, JJ. Trustee Smith, you were gonna jump in?
I just have one question. Can we be invited to the grand opening of the restaurant? Absolutely.
Thank you, trustee Smith. I, I just want to, um, add, first of all, thank you for being here. Thank you. The school looks, looks awesome. Uh, so thank you very much. And we were there, Vice President Nicolet and Superintendent McNeil and I for the, um, for the opening of the theater. And if that's any indication of what's to come in terms of the, the, just the way that the, this building is going to look, I mean, the theater is amazing. Cause I mean, I'd, I'd been up there for a, a show or two before, then to see the before and the after. It's like, oh my.
Turned out great.
I mean, it's just, it's beautiful. It's really, really, really a, a good piece for the, the students to be excited about and to do the work that they do in the theater. I mean, it's just, it's just amazing. So I'm very, very excited. Um, and just honored to have such, such strong, um, philanthropists who are that committed to, to the Highlanders and the impact that these things can make on the children, right, on the students, on the community. I mean, it's just, it's just very, very exciting. Um, so thank you. Um, I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking, really, really looking forward to it.
Very exciting.
Yes. So please, please share with the Duffields, um, our great appreciation.
Absolutely.
Definitely. And thank you for being here. Welcome. Congratulations on your position and happy birthday. Dr. Nicolet.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to sing happy birthday, but my gift is not singing it. So happy birthday.
Yeah, I'd have to do, I'd be.
I, I agree with, with Tierney. There just aren't enough words. And so I will simply reiterate that the Incline High Schools in general, all, uh, uh, schools in general, elementary, middle and high school are community places. They are gathering places for our children, our families, our community. And the, the, I guess, the beautification and expansion and opportunities that are now going to be afforded at the high school are, are breathtaking. And, and that's why I think there's very little words that can say thank you because it's, it's, it's almost unbelievable, the support that the Duffields have provided to our Incline community, our schools. And it is going to be so much fun to see how these utilize these new areas and the opportunities that are going to be afforded to them. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And, uh, you are all very much appreciated.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trustee Church?
I'm prepared to make motion.
Okay, go right ahead.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the agreement between the Washoe County School District and the Dave and Cheryl Duffield Foundation to fund the design and construction improvements at Incline High School for up to $38,302,742.
Thank you, trustee Church. Is there a second? Second by trustee Rodriguez? I'm, no, I'm gonna give that to Dr. Nicolet. These is their schools. So, well, she, she was a little slow, but you know, you know, fair, fair enough. She's a little slow. Um, but no, then that way, cause you were gonna jump in anyway and you represent Incline. So, so I think that's appropriate. Any further discussion? Great. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motions carry. The record show it is unanimous. Yay, yay, yay. All right. Very, very super exciting, super exciting. This is the fun stuff. You may as well stay right there because you're still in the hot seat. This is agenda item 3.05, approval of the agreement for professional architectural design services with Collaborative Design Studio for the Incline High School Expansion and Athletic Field Improvements in the amount of $2,900, which we've already just approved that budget. So, um, and this is for, this is for action. And Ms. Golden, we'll just go back to you to pick up where you left off or we can just keep going, whatever, whatever works.
Absolutely. So as indicated earlier, this agreement is directly related to the Duffield Incline High School Expansion and Field Replacement for $2.9 million with Collaborative Design Studios. It will include all design, um, fees, including construction addition.
Okay.
I think that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. We'll bring it here to, to the table. If there are any questions or comments or if someone would like to, uh, make the motion, get us going.
I will make a motion.
Trustee Church?
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the agreement for professional architectural design and collaborative design studios for the Incline High School Expansion and Athletic Field Improvements for $2,900,000.
Thank you, trustee Church. There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second from Dr. Nicolet? Okay. There, there, there is a second. Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Right, the motions carry. Let, let the record show again. It is unanimous. And thank you again. This is so exciting. And I saw the timeline on that. That's pretty, that's, that's, let's go to work and get after it. That's exciting. Great. Fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Golden. We appreciate it. And thank you again to the new ED. Thank you for being here.
See you next week.
Oh, yeah. That's right. That's right. The Highlander, I won't, I have to be out of town, remember? The only time I missed it. Yeah, whatever. All right. Actually, let's, let's have a quick break because we didn't really get to have a break during the break before. So, yes, and yeah, plus I just got a text that dinner's here. So we'll make it quick though because we only have one other business item, but it's gonna be a big one. It's our SIR evaluation. So it's gonna be a big one. So let's see if we can do this in 15 and then come back, right, and get right back to it. Everyone, 15 minutes. Thank you. All right, everyone. Let's go ahead and get back going again. We have a, um, a real important and a big agenda item in front of us. This is for discussion and possible action. I mean, this is for information and discussion only. Agenda item 3.10, presentation on the ongoing evaluation of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund or ESER II under the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental, um, Appropriations Act, CRRSA Act, and the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, ESER III, under the American Rescue Plan, ARP, track with me now, Act. All of that, and this for information and discussion only. Joe Ernst, we'll turn it over to you and we know you have guests.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, members of the board. Nice to see all of you again today. Uh, I do have, uh, three people with me. One of them's hiding right now, so we're gonna keep everybody on their toes. So first of all, Chief Accountability Officer Joe Ernst, and I'm joined by, uh, like I said, the three of us. We have Dr. Norma Velazquez Bryant, and she has really immersed herself in our ESER evaluation. So she's our lead evaluator. I also have Adriana Publico. Uh, some of you are familiar with Adriana, who is our ESER project manager. And from afar, we also have Kyle Kemp, who is our Accountability Officer. And so as we get into our presentation, we're gonna cover four major areas, uh, that are related to ESERS that really directly impact our students. What we'll do is in between each of the four areas, we'll pause for questions. And so, just wanted to kind of give everybody a little overview on that. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it, turn it over to Norma.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, good afternoon, President Taylor, trustees, ward of trustees, Superintendent McNeil, and welcome to Superintendent Enfield, if she's out there in the either world.
She is.
For the record, Norma Velazquez Bryant, ESER Program Evaluator, Office of Accountability. Today we're presenting the program evaluation findings for four major initiatives, as Joe said, funded by ESER in year one. Uh, although ESER funds many different efforts, these are the four initiative, our evaluation activities focused on this year because they are the largest areas of funding and are providing direct instructional service to students. These four initiatives are summer school 2021, tutoring programs, learning facilitators, and rally personnel. And we'll explain more about each of these as we go through the presentation. Um, okay, so first I want to give you a very brief summary of a typical evaluation cycle, uh, which includes two major evaluative stages, uh, the formative and summative. Today we're presenting the formative evaluation component, which occurs during program implementation, which happened in year one and continues as each program progresses. The formative evaluation will continue throughout the life of the program and will continue to aid in program, program improvement as we go along. The purpose of formative evaluation is to study the implementation, uh, whereas a summative evaluation is where we focus on impact on students. For our formative evaluation, uh, just a little bit of background, we administered various surveys for feedback from school administrators, teachers, site facilitators and families. And we used existing databases and records, which included data from MAP ELA assessments, uh, credit attainment in high school and GPA, uh, middle school and high school. And I just want to let you know that there are more detailed analysis of each of these programs on our website, but today we're gonna just, uh, concentrate on some of these key findings from year one. Uh, we'll start with initiative one, the 2021 Summer School Session held last year, and Joe will present some background information.
Okay, thank you, Norma. So, uh, on these findings, this is summer school 2021. So kind of want to go back to the year that we had last school year. We remember that we had students that were full in person. We had- we had students that were full in person. We had students that were hybrid. And remember, we had a substantial portion of our students that were also on distance learning. And so, coming out of that, we were going into Summer School of 2021. The sessions were held from June through August for our K-12 students, and really, the focus was getting students back into the building safely. We were still coming out of COVID, and really trying to help reacclimate students back into buildings. And so, we focused on academic recovery in kindergarten through fifth, credit recovery at our high school levels, and then, really, it was about returning to in-person learning, and really getting our students excited about school again. We know how much our students have been through. We heard it expressed at our graduations, time and time again, in terms of the impact that's been on our students. And so, really, this was an effort to really engage our students and get them back in school, and help them connect with adults and peers. You can see down there on the bottom, one of the pieces of feedback that we received on Summer School, "Great experience, and my child loved it and was bummed that it was not longer." And so, it was really well-received last school year for the Summer School. Give you kind of a quantitative overview. You can see that it was open to all students. Last year, we had just over 10,424 students attended Summer School in person. We, or excuse me, attended Summer School. Then, we had 669 attend the extended school year. Extended school year, really about some of our self-contained programs, and, and working with students a little bit more directly with support. We had 87 school sites. And then, last year, if you look over, you can see that the learning model was, we served 6,639 students in person, and then we had a high number of students that were served virtually. Think about our high school students, and a lot of the work that was done around credit recovery, being on Edge Annuity, and that might help you with a little bit better picture of the virtual learning that occurred. You look at the content, content that was covered in Summer School was all of the district adopted materials from Benchmark all the way through Edge Annuity. And then, up at grade nine and 10 through 12, you had Jump Start and Credit Recovery. And then, there were other additional supports that were in place with, again, a focus on enriching and making this experience something that said, okay, I can come back to school in the fall. I feel energized, and I'm, I'm ready for that next step. And then, of course, nutrition services also were provided. When we had the opportunity to look at the survey information that we received, we, we kind of put together what's called a SWOT analysis, where we're really just kind of looking at strength, weakness, opportunity, and threats. And as Dr. Velazquez Bryant talked about, we use this formatively to make adjustments as we're going forward. And so, it's been great that we've had this information around Summer School 2021 in preparation for Summer School 2022. Last year's Summer School, if you look at it, you can see 75% teachers, facilitators, families were satisfied with Summer School. But one of the challenges or an area of weakness that, that we had was around the communication. There were a number of aspects happening at that time as we were working to mobilize Summer School, some incoming legislative decisions that were impacting Summer School. And so, there were a lot of pieces happening at that point. But when you look at the number of students that actually attended, and you look at the satisfaction rate, you can see that while it was seen as a weakness, and certainly something we can work on this year going forward and have done so, really, it, it still had a pretty positive outcome. Opportunities that we identified is really just more pre-planning and a year of prior experience to improve our programming. And we're gonna talk about, as we move through this, where we're at with Summer School this year, and how this, this information has kind of driven some changes, okay? And then, threats, when we looked at that, one of the things with Summer School is attendance. One of the, one of the things that stood out in some of the information we received is that attendance was fairly intermittent, not like a regular school week where you're attending Monday through Friday. We had Summer School Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and we saw that some students attended on some days, and some students didn't attend on other days. And so, attendance was a little bit more hit and miss than I would say it was really on a regular school year. And then, you can see, as has been discussed in so many different contexts, the, the, the presence of the staffing shortage in terms of staffing Summer School with teachers, aides, assistants, et cetera. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Norma, who will walk you through some of the data that's been collected. And then, again, before we go on to any of the tutoring, we will pause and answer questions around Summer School.
Thank you, Joe. Don't let those, all those colors scare you. I'll try and explain it to you as best I can. On the next three slides, we're gonna look at the different metrics we used to determine the preliminary impact of Summer School for students in kindergarten through second grade using MAP ELA. And then, we'll look at grades nine through 12 using credit attainment. Note that we don't have results for grade three through eight in this presentation because we're using the SBACK ELA and math assessments, and those scores aren't available until later this summer. Analysis for these groups will occur this summer, and we'll update this presentation or this report on our website. So, look forward to those. So, this slide is the MAP ELA assessment for kindergarten in grade one. And first, a little bit of background on MAP assessments, just to kind of remind you. They're required by the state and must be administered three times per year in the fall, winter, and spring in grades K through three, which gives us a consistent metric for students in those grades. So, we thought that was a good place to start looking at impact. For our analysis here, we use the MAP ELA reading median RIT score. And as you can, as we'll see at the end here, our findings were a little bit mixed. Let's start with the figure on the top left for kindergarten MAP. So, there were 858 kinders enrolled with 758 who had both a MAP RIT score at the end of school year 2021, just before Summer School, and then a score in fall 2021, so just after Summer School. The red and orange pencils show the median RIT scores at the end of school year 2021 for Summer School students, so 150, and a median RIT score in the fall of 2021 at 151. Summer School students had an increase of one RIT point compared to the district, whose median RIT scores from that, if you can see, it's 153 and 153 for the same timeframe, the end of the school year, and then the fall measure. Also, for your information, the figure on the lower left has the breakdown of median RIT scores for Summer School students versus the district by race and ethnicity. Because we have a lot of material to cover, we won't discuss those specific numbers today. But overall, you can see there was some variation in results by race and ethnicity. And as we move along into our summative evaluation, that report will definitely include these, these data. Let's move to the figure on the upper right, and this figure can be interpreted the same as the KinderMAP we just looked at. There were 970 students enrolled in Summer School with 900 who had the RIT score at the end of the school year before summer, and then, there were 900 who had it after. These are the same kids. The median RIT score for first-grade students who attended Summer School declined by six RIT points, but you can see that the district also declined by five RIT points. So, that's a, a small difference. And we do tend to see this pattern between first and second grade, you know, in previous years before COVID. So, that decline was not a surprise to us. One of the things we suspect might be, so the kiddos in first grade, at the end of spring, were kindergartners. Or, I'm sorry, yeah, they were kinders. And at the beginning, were first graders, and the tests are a little bit different on how it's administered. And you'll see that again between first and second grade. So, the next slide shows the same results for grade two. Again, we had 833 students enrolled, and 764 had both the scores we needed, the end of the school year 21, and then in the fall after Summer School. The pencils show that the RIT for Summer School students increased by 1.5 RIT points from 179 to 180.5, and then, the district remained flat at 185 for both measures. So, the Summer School kids did a little bit better than the district. Let's look at the high school now. Grades nine through 12, we looked at credit attainment for students who attended Summer School 2021. Over 4,200 high school students participated with a little over 2,000, or 49% of students earned at least one credit during Summer School. This is kind of a tricky metric because some students may have started in the summer, but continued in the fall, or even into the spring. But we had, to our analysis, have a cutoff date, and so, we chose the end of August 2021. So, that 49% represents those students that finished by the end of August, before the next school year started. They, these earned credits included core subjects such as math, history, science, social studies, and then any other core courses that they might have needed. The figure in the bottom shows the credit attainment breakdown by grade, grade level of the 4,200 students. You can see that credit recovery rates were comparable across most grade levels, if you look at that little gray box. But that seniors staying for an extra summer had a slightly lower recovery rate at 40%, which makes sense, given that they're some of the higher need students in the district. So, their peer group had already graduated, and they stayed for that extra summer to make up some recovery, or some core credits, and then graduate later. And since we had a really pretty good graduation rate, I think it's, you know, they probably made up some, some well-needed credits. So, now, Joe's gonna present some information for the upcoming Summer School session, which starts next week on June 21st, but we're gonna stop first.
Okay, so going into Summer School this year, 2022, you can see that the model has changed a bit in terms of, we have 22 host school sites for our elementary schools, 13 for middle, and then, of course, all of our high schools offering Summer School credit recovery. Again, the content continues to remain around our district adopted materials in terms of math, ELA, various enrichment activities, continuing to have a focus on that, working to increase overall student engagement, jump start for math, and then high school credit recovery. We also know that this year, as I think many of you are aware, really a more targeted approach in terms of the students that we're serving. And so, really working towards active outreach. There were conferences, a number of parent-teacher conferences that occurred at elementary school in late February, which is when a lot of the outreach occurred in terms of reporting to parents. This is where your students at. And now, going into Summer School, here's an opportunity to help you with some additional learning. And so, there was a lot of active outreach and around our targeted students. Schools used MTSS processes to really look at what students were most in need, and really started from there to, to try to identify students. We do have in-person at the school sites. Again, the hours are the same during the, the school day, kind of that five and a half hours of instruction. And then, you have Summer School Challenge this year, really building on extending learning beyond the school walls, and really trying to, again, offer it for all students that continue to remain interested. And so, very creative work is done, done by our academics team around using some of the web-based programs and offering students specific challenges. And these challenges are based on overall usage rates. So, say, for example, you have DreamBox. DreamBox, to get some of the better returns around mathematical achievement, really needs to have a certain number of hours per week, or a certain number of lessons completed per week to have the impact you'd want. I mean, that's fairly intuitive. The more time you spend with it, the, the better you're going to learn. And so, what they've done is create some, some inviting challenges for students at all grade levels. So, if you're a grade-level student, you're meeting standards, but you want to stay engaged, and you want to be a part of some learning over the summer, we've got opportunities for you via some of the web-based programs. So, we've got that. We continue to provide for our special education students extended school year. And again, some of those same supports continue to remain in place. So, I think with that, just want to make sure. So, I think before we go on to the next slide, an opportunity to pause, ask any questions that you may have around some of the Summer School information. We are happy to answer those. And then, after that, we'll go on to our tutoring information.
Thank you very much. I do have a question. Thanks to both of you. Do, do we know what our numbers are for this year's Summer School? What do they look like?
We have about as many in-person students enrolled, or at least as many now, as we did, as we served last summer.
Okay. That was my question, was how does it compare to last summer? So, yeah, that's, that's really, really good work, because last summer was really more about just getting back in the classroom for so many kids who had been out. And this is, um, that's good, really wanting to go after the learning. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, please, go ahead. Looks like we're good. Oh, Dr. McNeil?
So, could we go back to the slide on the high school credit attainment? I think this is an absolute statement for the tenacity and resiliency of our seniors. When you take a look at that, for the number of credits attempted versus the credits earned. So, I want to do a huge shout-out to our seniors because that's, that's extraordinary for the number of attempted and the number earned. And then, just, you know, it, it's always very interesting to know how many credits were earned during that time. So, just a little tickle for the number of credits that, that were earned during that time. But awesome stats, so thank you.
Thank you, please. Mr. Ernst?
For the record, Adriana Publico, ESR Project Manager. We're gonna transition from summer to fall here. And back in the fall of 2021, we implemented our ESR-funded tutoring programs, offered to all of our schools that don't already have team-up after-school programs. So, we have data from 69 schools that participated just this fall. We just have the data from the fall because spring really just wrapped up last month, and we, no, last week, and we haven't had time to do that analysis yet. But in the fall, when we just implemented the program, we had 438 teachers and substitute teachers acting as tutors, providing tutoring to over 6,400 students for a total of over 61,000 hours, just in the fall of 2021. So, not a bad start. While we don't have the data for the whole year, we did survey our school leaders this spring to learn more about the programs that they had in place over the course of this past year. And we asked them about the tutoring models that they're using at each campus. And because each school could choose more than one model, and many of them do, you're not gonna see the numbers add up to 100% in the next two slides. But we do see on the first column that many schools are implementing small group and one-on-one tutoring, which later on, we'll share is the best practice, right? The best way to get gains is to individualize that learning and spend time with students one-on-one and in very small groups. And the vast majority of schools on the rest of the columns, you can see, are also offering tutoring during regular school hours. And you'll see that aligns also with best practice. We have some after-school programs going on as well, and a little bit before school. 79 of our school leaders responded to this survey. And we also asked them, who's providing tutoring? Because while ESR was only, is only funding teachers and substitute teachers to be tutors, we were wondering if anybody else is also providing tutoring on campus. And sure enough, we see that paraprofessionals, our teacher aides and assistants, volunteers, parents, and even college students are coming to help our students recover academically. We asked schools how select, how students were selected to receive tutoring, and largely, it's needs-driven. So, when a student struggles, tutoring is offered as an intervention, so that when they struggle, they don't necessarily get a bad grade. We can intervene before it hits the report card. But some schools are offering tutoring to literally every student who wants it, and we'll call that universal, right? So, it really depends on how the school wants to deploy these resources, what they think's going to work best for their populations. going to work best for their populations. So, 84% of our administrators who completed their survey agreed or strongly agreed that the tutoring programs at their schools are valuable. And when we look to improving these programs, we look for the research out there. And Dr. Velazquez Bryant has pored through hundreds of pages of research on tutoring programs and what works best. She's distilled those findings into this handful of actionable practices that we've shared with our schools and we're already seeing evidence that these practices are taking place in our schools. Notably, at North Valleys High School, pretty much every teacher is set up as a tutor so that when a student starts struggling, they can have extra time with their teacher on a regular basis and we can compensate that teacher to provide that extra support to the students. And then, we're also seeing evidence of goal-setting and student data driving academic gains at a very successful Saturday School program at Sparks High School that we're going to share with you more about later on. And tutoring really is one of the things that we know can drive very strong gains, both in math and reading, and obviously, those are our goals.
So, again, as promised, we'll pause here and if there are any questions around tutoring information that's from the fall, we can go into that. But before we do that, we're actually going to go into some of the data and then come back to those questions.
So, just kidding, no pause yet.
No pause.
Just kidding.
Keeping everybody on their toes, just again, working on that engagement.
Yeah, Trustee Smith was leaned in and she just turned her light off and just leaned back, okay.
Norma Velazquez Bryant, for the record. For the next three slides, we only looked at fall tutoring results again, as Adriana mentioned. We're still waiting for the spring semester data to come through. So, on this slide, we'll look at the MAP median percentile for tutored students versus the district. This is grades one through three. And so, we looked at their MAP ELA, median percentile, fall and winter, so of the same fall semester. As you can see on the figure in the upper right-hand corner, the dark blue bars, they compare the MAP ELA median percentile for tutored students in the fall and winter compared to the district in the light blue for the same period. The tutored students showed an increase of plus four percentile points and the district remained flat. So, what this tells us is that the students with the higher needs were the ones receiving tutoring at the elementary school level. They started at a 19 and made four percentile point, you know, gains, which is great. I wanted to share some information about the quantity of tutoring received by the students. That's that chart on the bottom there. The chart tells us that 63% of tutored students received two to 10 hours of tutoring. This tells us that the majority of elementary students tutored in the fall semester received some, or smaller amounts of tutoring. It's important to remember that we offer flexibility to schools to decide what tutoring framework would work best for their students and staff, which is why we see lower tutoring dosages than maybe recommended by the best practices that Adriana presented. The district believe that it's critical that schools have the opportunity to design the program that would work best for them during that fall semester because, you know, we were coming out of a lot of things. We had fire days, exclusions. So, there was a lot going on, which to me is amazing that they did the phenomenal job they did with all that was going on. On the next slide, middle schools. The metric used to evaluate how tutored students were performing was their GPAs. The analysis compared the GPA at the end of school year 2021 with their GPA at the end of the fall semester. As shown in the upper right corner, again, the dark blue bars, the tutored students had an increase of .17 points, but the district had .3 increase. So, the district outperformed the tutored students. However, there's a reason for that. The 55% of tutored students received less than five hours of tutoring. So, if you don't have a lot of hours of tutoring, you don't expect to see that much gain. So, that, you know, we actually weren't surprised by that. Although the tutored students started with a slightly higher GPA, 2.64 versus 2.61 for the district, these results again, were not unexpected because the tutored students did not, we would expect them to do better because they started with a higher GPA, but they didn't have enough tutoring hours, basically. So, with the high school, same thing. We did on this particular analysis, we used GPA comparing the end of school year 2021 to the fall of 2021. And the tutored students had a .24 GPA points increase and the district .22. So, but again, if you look at their starting GPA, these were the students, the students in tutoring were probably the ones that needed it the most. So, that's actually a pretty good indication that our tutoring programs at the high schools were doing a good job. And then 78% of tutored students again, received less than five hours. So, we keep going back to that, you know, how many tutoring hours they're receiving. We'll be replicating these analysis over the summer now that we have a full year of data, so we'll look at fall and spring and see if the trends continue. Okay, and then one final on this slide, these results are from the administrator check-in survey that we administered this spring and it included an open-ended question where we asked them if there were any other comments or suggestions they would like to share. And the quotes represent some of the prevalent themes that we found. Having a dedicated interventionist is powerful. It allows us to work with students who need extra support and who don't have an IEP, which is an individualized education plan. Improvement in grades, attendance and behavior of some of our tough-to-reach students, and engagement and connection with some of our quiet students, which I love that. That was great. Provide more money for the sustainability of the program. And they shared that after-school is not working, staff is burned out, and does not want to stay beyond contract time. So, again, we're getting into the teacher burnout.
Okay, now, as promised, now as promised, happy to answer any questions that you have around our tutoring programs from the fall.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to start with Trustee Smith and then we'll go to Kirk Minneto.
Thank you so much, President Taylor. So, what I wanted to bring attention to, and I love all this, I love the metrics, I love the way that you have presented this, this really jives well with my analytical mind. On slide 11, there's something that we, you touched on it, but I really think we need to pause and bear witness to, which is that total hours, 61,522 hours. That is incredible. That is, to me, it reminds me of when we were getting our presentations in the fall about the numbers of meals served, like during COVID, and I was like, whoa, we need to pause on these millions, we need to pause and acknowledge those 61,000 hours. That's an incredible amount of focused support that goes directly to the heart of what individual students need for their individual educational paths. And I think that that is absolutely incredible. So, with that said, actually, one of the comments back on slide 18 was one of the questions I had until you got to that slide, which was the burnout. So, as we evolve the program, are there ways that we can integrate that feedback and recognize the fact that our teachers are really putting a lot into this? I do believe they have to voluntarily sign up for this, but are there ways that we can integrate that feedback so that this can be sustainable?
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Great question. So, I'll take you back to, I'm not sure of the slide number, but this is the one that shows the various models. And to recognize that and recognize the load that our teachers are carrying, we saw the number of hours that they're serving students. A lot of times right now, what we're seeing now is in even more concerted effort to do the tutoring during the school day. And we're seeing that really tutoring during the school day is a really effective way of going about it. Elementary schools are often hiring retired schoolteachers to come in and serve those students, to work directly with them in small groups. I think that that, if you look at, you know, intervention teacher substitutes, that's a model that continues to kind of gain momentum, recognizing that after-school piece. So, I think that's one of the adjustments that is being done. I think one of the, one of the things that has been done real well here is providing principals flexibility. So, if we would have given a real kind of rigid set of confines to work within, that may have limited schools in terms of when they could have done it, the before school because as a former principal, some school, some schoolteachers, they'll say, I'd love to come in and tutor before school. That works well from a scheduling standpoint and with my life beyond school. And so, by offering this flexibility and continuing to keep that flexibility, I think it helps principals and staff work together to make sure that somebody's not volunteering to, that it really, it might not be the best for them in terms of that burnout because they're also responsible for the teaching and learning that's occurring during the school day and the planning that occurs behind that, the grading of assignments that occurs behind that and what have you. So, I do think there's been some really good outreach to former teachers to bring them in and help them serve students. And I think that's one of the adjustments. But, you know, as far as recommendations going forward, we really promote continuing to keep that flexibility so that schools can identify the staff that they, that is willing to help doing some of this tutoring.
If I may jump on that, if I may, and then you'll, I'll get to you, Kirk Minneto. It's just in that, the feedback that you got from teachers, which is where one of the comments, right, the burnout comment came from, and because building administrators are making those decisions, is that information shared with building administrators? So, maybe now as an administrator, I'm like, you know what, I know I love after-school tutoring or whatever, but I'm hearing from my teachers that, oh, it's burnout and it's hard to, you know, that might help to mitigate a little bit because I might be an evening person and I would like to tutor after-school all day. But if it doesn't work well with my teachers who've been teaching, I mean, is there, is there, can they have access? Can they take a look and see what the feedback is and then learn? I know we're learning from it, but so they can learn from it too.
Yeah, it's a good point, Dr. Taylor, absolutely, in terms of communicating this to schools. Important information, again, when we went back to some of the evaluation process, you had that formative part of the evaluation process. We're working in that space right now. And so, we get that information out to our principals. I know OSL, Office of School Leadership's going to communicate that information. Again, we have this posted on our website so people can see it there. But I think the intentional outreach to learn early. And then, one of the real advantages that we have this year is, last year, this was really mobilizing. Again, sometimes I'm getting lost in the past two school years and the smoke days that occurred at the beginning of each of those. And if you remember, on the mobilization of this tutoring effort really was occurring in August. And again, when we go back to August and some of the smoke days and what have you, there was an amazing way to mobilize. Now, principals have advanced notice, so they're working on putting plans together right now, going into next year. So, I think that helps from a scheduling standpoint with people and just kind of managing some of those things. So, I think giving them a little bit more runway on the front side is going to help mitigate as well.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Ernst. Kirk Minneto?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I see that on slide 17, that the number of hours, you know, the five to 10, whatever it is, that's per week, correct? What does that mean?
This was total for the fall, aggregate data.
Okay, thank you. Because I was wondering how we were going to get 55 hours in with those 12 students in one week.
That was over the course of the semester.
Okay.
But many students just needed an hour or two of intervention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk Minneto. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, President Taylor. I just want to commend you. Look, I'm a big fan of tutors, I really am. And I hope that you can continue to expand on this and make it more sustainable. I appreciate the comments. I mean, I would say even the students with IEPs need extra help. And I would just really ask you if you sort of open up that pool, widen that pool of tutors, you know, I don't know, Joel, maybe substitutes or I don't know if those are options, high school students, some of our honor students who can teach some of the younger students at the elementary level. But so many of our kids, particularly with the lost learning, they just need that extra help and the tutoring is so valuable. And I can speak for personal experience because my children use the tutors, so thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Mayberry. I have a question as well as, I know that there, and you answered part of it, I don't know if Adriana, I don't know if you knew you did on purpose, but of course not, you didn't know my question. But you answered part of it. I was thinking of what is, is there a best practice in terms of numbers of hours a student needs because so much of it has to do with the success of the program. I saw those who had 50 hours over 35 weeks or something like that. But then you made the point that some students only need an hour or two of intervention. But is there a sweet spot? Is there a place we look for, a place we look to land? Because as I look at, no, I'll do that, I was going to get into my second question. Go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, so, very good. So, just that sweet spot that we're trying to land in is really, when you work in smaller groups, that's going to have an impact, more individualized attention, you can diagnose need more quickly, address it immediately in the teaching. You can see that really 30 to 60 minutes is optimal. I can tell you from a school experience, you're better off on the 60-minute side than the 30-minute side. 30 minutes moves quick when you have kids in front of you. And really, to get to the full of it, 60 minutes is really optimal. I could tell you that in one of our core interventions down in elementary school, our leveled literacy intervention that comes with benchmark adopted materials, really 45 minutes of that material is really essential. So, schools have to be, and again, this is that runway on the front side when you're looking at scheduling for the year. If you can get to that 45 minutes, oftentimes, on early literacy, you're consolidating early literacy skills through writing. And writing takes time. And so, an area that unfortunately can get cut when you're operating in the 30-minute mark is not getting to the writing. And the writing is really where literacy gets consolidated. So, I'd say, and even the recommendation in our benchmark series is around 45 minutes. So, little bit of information that way. And then you look at that three to five days per week. One of the things that I think we're excited about is we've really been, just some great work around the accounting of who is attending our tutoring sessions. And so, multiple departments, we were able to come up with, and I think Kyle is on standby out there online, was really pivotable in terms of getting all of this inside of, working with Infinite Campus, just to really help make sure we're able to. So, when we look at hours served, we think probably going into the spring, you're going to see those hours and those couple of bar graphs that you, that you could see on the one side over here. You can see the two hours or the two to five hours now with increased, again, longer period of time. This is fall data. So, now you're looking and you're going into spring, again, the mobilization at the school level gets better, the accounting of who's attending, that gets better. And I think just being able to serve more students for longer periods of time. So, I do think each, and again, that's why I like the formative part of the evaluation. We have this information right now to help us, it informs us, and then it really gives us a place to go forward from.
Okay, I think you took care of my, where I was going with my second question as well, so. All right. Pause over, we can keep going.
Okay. All right, so our next, we are going to go ahead and go into learning facilitators.
All right, so, what is a learning facilitator? There are, these are certified teachers in every elementary school in Nevada to support instruction. I shouldn't say that. LF's, okay, you raised that. They're learning, certified teachers in every elementary school in Washoe County School District to support instruction. We have 68 LF's in the district with 45 funded by Essar. The LF's provide direct and indirect intervention and instruction to K5 students in reading and writing and math. They model lessons, co-teach best practices, observe and offer feedback to teachers in the classroom. They support professional learning communities, our PLCs, by modeling collaborative structures. They support teachers' use of assessment data at school sites. LF's also satisfy LFs also satisfy the state of Nevada AB 289, read by grade three law, that requires a literacy learning specialist in every elementary school. So that's what I was talking about earlier. But there's one in every school in Nevada. So we administer two surveys, one in the fall to teachers and then one in the spring to administrators. The teachers, there were over, we sent it out to over 1,079 elementary school teachers. And we got 402 respondents, or about 38% response rate, which is actually typical for the district. And went to 66 administrators in the spring with 39 respondents, or 59% return rate. So those were elementary school principals. We asked the teachers to what degree their LF provides support to teachers. And we asked administrators to what degree their LF strengthens teacher capacity. The respondents on both surveys were allowed to select or provide information on more than one category. So those will not add up to 100%. 82% of teachers agree or strongly agree that the LF provides support with intervention strategies. 80% with implementation and analysis of classroom-based formative assessments. 79% with standards-based lesson planning. 77% with differentiated instruction and 75% with enrichment strategies. And then 92% of administrators agree or strongly agree that the LF strengthen capacity with these three main categories, the Nevada academic content standards, tier-one instruction, and professional learning communities. So basically, what this is telling us is that teachers and administrators, the schools love their LFs. They're doing a phenomenal job. So that's good news. A quote from an administrator, "My LF is invaluable to my school. She is a key player in strengthening instruction in our MTSS process. If I were to ask for one thing from the district, it would be to keep LFs at our school sites. The progress will not be sustainable without them."
All right, we'll try not to jump ahead again. But we have any questions at this point for learning facilitators?
Trustee Smith, and then we'll go to Dr. Nicolette.
Thank you, President Taylor. So how did you choose those 1,000-plus on the staff side and then the number of administrators? Because they don't represent the entirety of the staff served by them.
We actually, on the learning facilitators, our LF coordinator, Amy Howe, provided us with a list of, we were kind of like randomly selected to send out these surveys. But we did send them out to all administrators at elementary schools.
Okay. Just as a suggestion, in the future, it might be good to see, you know, to open it up a little bit. And then when you said that the teachers were polled or surveyed in the fall, when in the fall exactly?
It was December.
It was December, how? Are you planning to do another survey? I mean, I know we just closed the school year, so I don't know how many teachers are checking their email.
Right.
Over the summer.
Zero.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. No, we'll be doing another survey in the fall.
I would certainly never direct, but it would be interesting to open up the survey.
One of the things that we were really conscious of this semester, this spring and fall, was not to over-survey our staff. We have a lot of initiatives going on right now. In fact, the administrator survey, there were six categories. We had to combine different groups of people into one survey because they were being surveyed to death. So we were trying to be really mindful, especially in spring with testing and teacher shortages. And, you know, it was just kind of crazy for surveys. So hopefully in the fall, everything will be ideal and we will survey again. And definitely want to look at some more on LFs.
Yeah, that would be good. Because they obviously don't have to take it, but at least it extends the invitation. So I support building learning facilitators. I've seen them in action and I've heard how great they are. And I also know that we need to have literacy specialists. An interesting detail in future surveys would be, I know that there's difference in how the learning facilitators perform those duties at schools. Some are student-facing, some are not. It would be interesting as a data point to ask that from your survey respondents to see if responses around that are at all, have any causation around, you know, the way that those roles. And again, we're not talking about individual learning facilitators or their value or them as people. But it would be interesting to explore that as a function. Because I do hear an emerging body of comment around, now that we've had them for a while and some of the results that we're seeing. So I'll just offer that as a suggestion.
Yes, and in fact, you'll see that towards our conclusions, towards the end, recommendation about continued clarification around those roles and responsibilities. So you'll see that as we're going.
And again, we have, we actually did ask those questions. So it will be on our website with the full report. It's just we had to kind of keep it, you know, what we were presenting here to a minimum because we have a lot of information. But yeah, it was very interesting. You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Go to Dr. Nicolette and then over to Clerk Menedo.
I will just say that Trustee Smith did an excellent and thorough job of covering the areas that I wanted to chat about, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolette. Clerk Menedo?
Thank you, Madam President, and I concur with that. So there is no specific amount of time they're in direct and, or they're directly in contact with the kids? Or so there's, it's kind of site-based, is that correct?
There does seem to be a fair degree of variation at the sites in terms of more on the capacity building around the tier-one side. And then maybe a little bit more of direct intervention with students. And so again, as we walk towards conclusions, towards the end, I think that's one of the things. And I think again, when you look at the formative evaluation side, and I see Dr. Parks is coming up as well. But when you see that, that's exactly what we want from an evaluation. Is that evaluation gives us information, we're responsive as a system, can make those adjustments and continue to improve as we're going forward.
Thank you. Dr. Parks, you want to chime in?
I'm trying.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. I think I heard, I just want to clarify, that we're talking about the variation possibilities between LFs at different sites? Okay. Yeah, and we have heard that as well. I would take us back to the year that we had. And though our intention was with the LFs that they were going to be your onboard coach. And in their job description, it's pretty specific that we didn't want them being subs, deans, those type of extended service, right-hand to the principal. Like all of us saw, we ended up having to be a little bit more flexible as far as how they were utilized due to the exclusions and the lack of guest teachers in our schools. We have a plan to address that. And with our start-of-the-year training for our LFs, we will be again reviewing the intent, which is that tier-one instruction. What are the standards that students need to be learning? And how do we make sure that they learn it in that first go-round? So we'll be revisiting that as well as, not just with the LFs, but we have plans for, at our academy, that we'll be revisiting that again with our principals about what the LF's intentions are and how to best utilize them to meet the learning needs of our students.
Thank you, Dr. Parks. Okay. All right, we can keep diving.
All right. So we're on to the fourth category, and that is our rally personnel. We've heard about it quite a bit in, throughout various presentations. Really, rally is about re-engaging and accelerating learning for local youth. So that still sits underneath the ESER grant. And really, it was a way of getting more teachers and staff to support students. I take you back to the survey that was done before we even received some of the ESER money. And if you recall, the overwhelming feedback we received was support staff at schools and support for students that have extra needs. And then there was also the student well-being. Those were the three major categories. And so what you can then see here is, these rally positions are really a remarkable something. Because these are people that are working directly with students all the time. Give you kind of an overview of what that looks like. 47 are core teachers, math, English, social studies, and science. So we've talked about lowering those class sizes in those core content areas. We know credit attainment in ninth grade, 10th grade, throughout, is fundamental. We know when those class sizes are smaller, more individualized attention, better the learning. So 47 of the total positions, there's a number of position funded. You can see is around 99.05. And so you can see that. And so we had 47 that are core teachers. You could see that we had 17 and a half of those that are intervention teachers. So again, serving our students most in need. Again, this is middle and high school. So just to continue to keep us on point that way, we had five and a half extra special education teachers that were there to serve students, working again more individually with them. We had, there was conversation a little bit earlier today, we had 21 teacher aides and assistants. And mind you, that those make a gigantic difference at a site level when we are working with students. And then you had prep period buyouts. And, you know, as Dr. McNeil was saying again, you know, she was talking about the high school and the credits earned and credits attempted. You know, there's so much great that can be found here when you really work yourself through the data. And we had 77 prep period buyouts. And so as an elementary school guy, when I was an area superintendent, it took me a little bit to make sure I really understood what a prep period buyout. So just to kind of orient us as a group, prep period buyouts, when a teacher gives up their prep period and they take on regularly another section of teaching. So it might be a teacher who teaches algebra, who their prep period, rather than have that prep period, they take on another algebra class. And so you talk about commitment that's being made by our teachers and their willingness. And, you know, there was a comment earlier about paying, you know, being mindful of that burnout. And I think there are some lessons learned here as well with our administrators. But again, what an incredible testimony of our teachers willing to do that, lower those class sizes, find time outside of their prep periods to do some of the essential work of planning lessons, grading student work, et cetera. And so it's really a testimony, and again, just a way of lowering those class sizes. It's really centered around academic recovery and student well-being. You could see from the positions that are described where those monies are being given. Again, this allowed, again, there's some flexibilities in it. We worked with our Office of School Leadership and principals. So they could, rather than just say, everyone gets this as an extra, each school, as you guys know, out visiting schools, each school has its own, its own needs, its own context. And this allowed them to address the context of their specific school. If you look down at the very bottom, 99 out of 102 budgeted positions were filled. And so again, when we look at staffing shortages, teacher shortage in general, this is a really good piece of information. And then even going back to prep period buyouts, when you have teacher shortage, if we're able to get additional teaching from some of the teachers that we have, that helps address some of that shortage as well. So I just think when you look at this, there's a lot of really promising information and good information here around the rally grants. And then, let's see.
All right, so now we're going to go back to the administrator check-in survey. And we asked them, so we're going to look at the results on the left there. We asked how the additional positions funded by ESER helped with students and staff at their schools with regards to the two categories. So the lists that they had to pick staff from were either academic recovery or student well-being. And so we asked them about those. 95% of, or 93% of administrators felt that additional staff improved academic support. And 68 felt that they helped reduce class sizes. 39% felt that they improved student behavior. And 32% felt that they improved student attendance. So I know what your question's going to be. The lower percentage under student well-being is most likely because the majority of administrators selected ESER positions focused on academic recovery, like additional core teachers. And much fewer selected positions focused on well-being, like counselors, social workers, attendance officers. So it makes more sense, or it makes sense that the administrators were more likely to say their rally positions helped with academic recovery. We asked administrators also how concerned they were with, about the sustainability of their rally positions after funding ends next year, 2023. And 93% indicated they were moderately or extremely concerned. And I want to add that we also had a comment section for this. And I would say, by and large, this was the most, most, biggest concern that administrators have was losing these positions. They felt like this was the biggest impact that ESER funding has had is with these positions, these rally positions.
So then when you go over to the next steps, you can see on rally positions, really, these are continue, we continue to fund these through next school year. We can, we will continue, again, early in our evaluation process. But lots of new information has come in through the spring that will offer us an opportunity to dive deeper with evaluation information through the summer. But we want to continue to study the effectiveness of the rally positions. And then really, those considerations for the rally positions going forward. And you can see, again, not to be unexpected here, you could see secondary school administrator says, "The need for extra teachers and campus supervisors does not go away after next year. We need these positions." And so again, you know, there's been some extended conversation around pupil-centered funding and some of the outcomes that can come as a result of increased funding and what that might be able to do to support things. But you can see that by and large, our schools really appreciate that additional personnel at the school level. So before going on, we've got just a couple more sections to go over. We're going to talk to you a little bit about some of the work we've done with our community stakeholders. And then some overall recommendations we have going forward. But before doing that, happy to answer any questions around rally positions.
We'll go to Dr. Nicolette.
Yes, thank you. I can, I feel and see your excitement about this program. So the previous slide where you referenced, it's the rally personnel slide, 99 of 102 budgeted positions filled, that's remarkable. That's the quantitative. Qualitatively, why does that happen? And how do we replicate that in other areas?
If I may? Yeah, okay. Positions, with rally and with tutoring, principals are given a budget and they can adjust as necessary. So these rally plans changed over the course of time as they identified needs and resources able to fill them. So if they found somebody that they wanted to hire or that they actually had at school last year perhaps, or a retired teacher, and on the rally menu, there was a position that they could fit and fill a need in the school, they hired that person. So basically, these plans are agile, based on the needs and the resources available. And principals have really capitalized on that in order to get what they need at their schools.
Thank you, that's one element. So of those 99 positions, how many of those positions were classroom teachers that then switched to becoming rally personnel and were no longer assigned? and were no longer assigned to a classroom?
It's, that's a great question, because I think that's something we want to pay a lot of attention to, is terms of the dominoes behind it, and making sure that we are filling our classrooms with teachers. I can tell you from an LF standpoint, not from the rally standpoint, what we did is we did some early analysis to see who was filling the LF positions. Just to give you an example, we can dig deeper on rally, but on the LF side, what we found is that every position where a teacher perhaps moved out of a classroom into the LF position, we were in the high ninety percent on the next position that filled that was a certified teacher, not a substitute teacher, a certified teacher. The next question that comes from that is how far do those dominoes go back? And that's really, you know, part of it. But I think just kind of on an encouraging note, at least on some early analysis that was done, we could see that when LFs moved to the LF position, their position was filled by a certified teacher.
And a little bit of clarification on rally personnel, these are still teachers in classrooms. Their funding source might have changed, and maybe they're coming off of the general funding onto rally or ESER, but the school is still using that funding in other ways, if that makes sense.
It, it does make sense, that last part. The first part, they are still assigned to one classroom?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm missing then exactly what this, yes, please help me.
So it could be that a middle or a high school wanted to add an extra section, section of a particular core subject. So they could have added a science teacher, or they could have added an algebra teacher, and that teacher is now on ESERs, is now within the rally grant. They're still, they're still a classroom teacher. That's what Adriana was talking about when we were saying core classrooms. Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Schools get an allocation of staff, right? This allowed them to expand that. Some of them are funded by the general fund, and some folks are funded by ESER. But basically, we're getting more people into buildings with this funding.
So it's, it's a funding program, not a teacher, not a classroom assignment strategy?
Correct.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
No, I just tried to turn the thermostat because it's cold. And no, I just, I just, and meanwhile, Joe's under a fan. I know, sorry. It's cold. I'm sorry, Joe. You're a big guy, sorry. I guess, if I, if I may jump into that. So, so, because the question has come up before, and I think, Trustee Smith, I think you're asking about this as well. So the clarification, I think, is really, is really good. So, so it's not as though a teacher has left their classroom assignment. I am still a, an elementary school science teacher, right? And I am still doing what I would ordinarily do as an elementary school science teacher, right? But now I am probably not elementary, but middle school, right? Anyway, you get, you get my sense, right? So now, maybe I'm going to teach another section or two of science as a part of this rally. So then, we're getting, I'm either going to teach out of science, or I'm going to be, help other teachers learn how to do that, give some better intervention, or do some special work with some individual kids or some, is that, is that kind of thing? Or did I just make that up in my head? Which I am, I am prone to do, so.
That's all basically accurate.
Okay.
Right? So maybe we have more math teachers and fewer students in each math class. Or maybe we have a prep period buyout where instead of teaching six sections of algebra, I teach seven. It basically just allows us to do more with what we've got.
Okay, so when we say ninety whatever percent, ninety-nine of the one-hundred-and-two, it doesn't mean that's ninety-nine teachers that are now no longer teaching in the classroom. They're doing the rest. That's just those that we had ninety-nine, and the positions look different. This one might be a prep buyout, this one might be additional section, this might be, but, but I think we have a lifeline up at the microphone now, so.
Hi, Gina Curtis. So a good example would be adding an additional math teacher, for example, or a campus supervisor for support. And I think Adriana touched upon it with the menu options, that the principals have the autonomy to look at their data and their needs, and to be able to hire a position and that person for that need. I know that a middle school example, the, they're sixth, seventh, and eighth grade now, and so some principals hired an extra sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teacher to help with the team approach for learning. So they had an extra person on staff for that grade level who could help with interventions, could co-teach. So again, it's based upon the needs of the school and, you know, the people behind that, and using their strengths to support our, our students.
So in some cases, it may be that they don't have a traditional teaching assignment. They're still teaching, they're certainly working directly with students, but that isn't always the case. Okay. I mean, I mean, it's always the case that they're working with students.
Yes.
But it isn't always the case that, that here is a person who left their regular teaching assignment, and now they're going, that may be it. Or it may be that now they just, they sold out, they let their prep be bought out, or something like that. Okay. That's helpful. That's helpful. Thank you. Okay.
So by buyout, do we mean that we're paying them, thank you?
Buy out. That's the teacher over there asking about that. Yes, that's the teacher. All right. It was like buy out, like buy. No, it's like we're buying, yeah. No, it's not, that's it. Right.
Compensating them for their hard work.
Right, right. As, as we should, certainly, as we should, they're taking on additional duties.
Yep, yep.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. I think we can, we can keep progressing past rally.
Okay. So we'll talk, talk to you then a little bit about stakeholder engagement and some of our outreach that we've done that way.
All right. So I actually have a little heart on my notes here, because this is really an exciting and amazing part of this whole program. Under ESER III, the district must consult with community stakeholders every six months. So they're kind of forcing you to do it, but we love doing it. So it wasn't really a force. The district has worked very closely with an amazing group, and has asked them to provide their perceptions of project, of our project implementation and outcomes. At our latest meeting in May, after presenting some of the same findings that we saw here today, we facilitated a focus group and asked them to provide suggestions and ideas for areas where they saw challenges. The areas they identified were student engagement, tutoring programs, teacher recruitment and retention, sustainability, and of course, our problems with transportation. A lengthy report with their ideas will be on our website this summer. So this is just like really, really basic. And we look forward to working with this group, this outstanding group. They included parents, teachers, students, other educators, and then again, what the U.S. Department of Education kind of mandated, we have, and we have all of these people on our, on our stakeholder group. A quote from a stakeholder member is that they're excited to be part of the conversation. It is refreshing to be part of this process. So really, some really, really amazing people. They've just been very helpful.
And it's, it has really been a great opportunity to work with community members, to really get very direct candid feedback in terms of how we're using these, these monies. And again, just as a reminder, on the website, we really list things out in terms of how all of our ESER funds are, are being used, okay? So going into some of the conclusions now, if you look at summer school, the initial summer school, we talked about the session provided, students with academic support, supported students, transition to traditional learning in the fall semesters, we talked about that. Improvements that have been made going into this year, targeting students with more intentionality that are credit deficient or not at grade level. Ample time was provided for teachers to get some additional planning to make sure they were really well-prepared in terms of teaching summer school. And then that earlier communication with families, that has also occurred. That was established earlier this year. And so we feel like we're in a pretty good place going into summer school starting next Tuesday. On the tutoring side, maintaining flexibility in the types of tutoring programs, we talked about some of the advantages that come from that in terms of context and, and working with staff. Implementation challenges that are being addressed, briefly talked a little bit about our overall improved data collection methods. We feel like we've really taken a big step forward. What we worked in the fall is we didn't, there's always the careful burden of putting too much administrative task on schools. And when you are looking at managing burnout, when that administrative task becomes more than what the intention of the program is, you really want to take that step back and recognize that. And so we have really worked over time to simplify, get a more efficient data collection, and feel really good. And that's really been in place from January up until now. And so that's in place going forward. And then again, continuing to refine, as with most things, the second year you do it, you're, you're probably going to do it a little bit better than you did it the first year. And so we can see that. We've talked about the best practices, some things that we can see that way. Again, we'll run that analysis of spring tutoring to see what those hours are in terms of if we are increasing to get to that overall sweet spot of hours that students are getting. Then on the LF side of things, they've been extremely helpful. You saw the survey data that came back in terms of building teacher capacity. And I want to just put a little bit of a point on that. When you're in a pandemic and you are all hands on deck, professional learning, it, it gets paused, because our obligation is to make sure that we have students in-person learning. And so when you look at academic recovery and the complicated equation that it is with academic recovery, the ability to provide professional learning is really still very key in terms of what we're doing. And so, you know, again, that, that optimism of maybe coming into the fall and, and seeing where we're at, so you can see that, just continuing to build that teacher capacity, that can't be understated. And, and we just have to recognize collectively as a system what the pandemic put on us. And then, bless you. And then we have, you know, again, kind of one of the recommendations or conclusions going forward, we know that it is aligned with ESER funding and read by grade three. And then even as Dr. Parks had talked about, the need to define the roles and responsibilities just a bit more clearly as we're going forward. On the rally side of things, you've got the additional staff has been very impactful in terms of the workload for the teachers. And then you can see the overwhelming concern about maintaining the personnel at the school level. And so continuing to use evaluation information to drive decision-making processes and seeing what we want to do with that. So that's kind of some of those conclusions. As we do that, we'll talk to you just a little bit more about evaluation, and we're going to show you a good video to, to finish up.
All right. So what's next on the program evaluation cycle for year two? We're going to continue to engage in, in formative evaluation activities to study and refine programming. So formative never really goes away. It's something you continue on and on. So you don't get past something and then go, oop, we shouldn't have done that. And over the summer and throughout the next two years, we'll begin our summative activities to study more in-depth the impact of these efforts on student academics and well-being. So that's what we'll, and then, finally, good program evaluation, always make sure that they disseminate their findings and their reports. So we have a large group of stakeholders that we would be submitting reports and findings to. And then everything that we're doing is on our website, in the Department of Research and Evaluation. So you'll be able to find anything you need. And a lot of what we presented here tonight was just the bare bones type stuff, you know, the, the major conclusions. But if you're really interested in digging in, there's a lot more information on there, on each of our surveys and whatnot.
And one, one additional point that I would like to just share with the group is US Ed reached out to Washoe County School District to look at what we're doing with our ESER funding, and recognize it as some of the best practices, and working to share that information with other school districts throughout the country. So do you want to just kind of share that a little bit?
Awesome.
Well, President Taylor, I am so glad that Mr. Ernst said that, because I was just going to jump in and share that little nugget right there, that, you know, it's, it's very nice when Washoe County is really performing very, very well, and we get the word out there. And I will also say too, it's, it's really very important to understand that we have a very professional and profoundly gifted research and evaluation in our own district, our own department for research and evaluation, and they do a top-notch job. And they give us transparency, and they provide the honest-to-goodness truth, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And that's, you know, the really important part about actual research and evaluation. So I just want to do a huge shout out to that, to that office. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Trustee Smith?
Can we acknowledge that on the ESERs page, or have some?
That's a great, that's a great idea.
Possibly beyond that, but at least on the ESERs page.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I think that's fantastic. I mean, the, the thing that, and I think it's, it's really a legitimate question, is, you know, what's going on with all the ESER money? I think that's a very, very legitimate question from the community, from, from teachers, from, you know, students that are, you know, a little bit more in the know. And so I think it's really legitimate. So I know that we're really good about, hey, this, this kind of information you share with us will be on the, on the, on the, on the ESER page as well. But I, I think another part of that is, right, is talking about that, man, we've, we've done such a good job with this, that, that, that we're being identified as the best practice. And not because everything is one-hundred percent all of what we wanted, let's be, right, we've never, we've never gotten an infusion like this and had these kinds of challenges and the, you know, and the need for the kind of recovery, right, that, that we've had before. But just to say, hey, at least we're going to bother it in the right way. I think just really coolos to the team, really coolos to the team.
Very good. Okay. So with that, we're going to wrap it up here. And again, again, in terms of some of the recognition, before I turn it over to Adriana, and again, I want to thank Norma for, for her tremendous work on the evaluation and the presentation. And then I also want to thank Adriana as an ESER project manager. She's really got a great understanding of how important it is to get the good word out into our community, because that's really important to what we're doing in education. And she's been really instrumental in working with our communications team, and reaching out to schools, and making arrangements to get out there. So with that, I just want to turn it over to her to kind of share that with you. Okay?
Thanks, Joe. One of the most rewarding aspects of my work really is sharing some of the good things that are happening in our schools, because they're literally happening every day. And I don't think we always talk about it. So as Joe mentioned, I collaborate with our communications team a lot on monthly news stories, but also just a news section I added to the webpage yesterday called Spotlight on Success. This is a video from Spotlight on Success. This is a video that Jeff Foss on our communications team made to share with you first, but with everybody else too, later on. So JD's got it ready to go for us. It's about two minutes.
I used to come very often because I used to be behind a little bit in like some classes, but now I'm caught up. And now I'm back here again because I slacked off. Just the motivation, knowing that I could get my dream job if I really work hard enough for it, and if I don't slack off.
I can sit down with them one-on-one. If they have any questions, I'm right there. I give feedback right away when they finish an assignment. Yes, you have this correctly, or no, you have to work more on the assignment. The students who come, they definitely improve their grades. And it's not only one grade, but in many cases, from an F, they could come up to a C or even a B.
A lot of our students face adversities that are out of their control. So the fact that they're coming in and taking the time to still try and stay on track to graduate is really important. So I'm just validating that their efforts will be worth it at the end of this.
I am working on a portfolio. I'm trying to catch up. Yeah, I'm a little behind. It's quiet, for one. There's less people. You go focus more.
Saturday school does not substitute being in your class, getting the instruction, engaging in those discussions. But for some students that are having either mental or social anxiety, this is a safer space for them to come. It really started with our exclusions with COVID, but it took and got a lot of momentum. And so we've been able to keep, keep the momentum going, and students have been really successful. I think is why it's been successful, is that it's not mandatory, that it's really just for the kids. We're here. You show up great.
They give me the time I need to complete my assignments without having to rush through a whole class period.
We send home postcards every time we have intercession, just thanking them for coming. Their parents are proud of them. A lot of tension happens when their grades come home, and the parents are like, I had no clue.
come home, and the parents are like, "I had no clue you weren't doing well." And so, this is, we use this as an opportunity to fix that.
And that was funded by ESER Tutoring Program.
All right. Saturday School, nice. And there are other... Oh, you have to go. You go.
There are four more, for your viewing pleasure, whenever you would like, but not right now.
Right, yeah, no, not right now. Thank you, though. Yeah, not right now.
All right. And so, with that, we will go ahead and conclude our presentation. You can see that it concludes with some of our graduates. And I wanted to thank each of you for attending the graduation, being a part of our graduations. It's a really rewarding time and a really rewarding experience when we see the excitement in our students. We get to see it in their eyes when they come out to greet us. And I just wanted to thank you all for your efforts to be at graduation, because all of this ESER money is all about those kids. And so, we just wanted to conclude with that. So, thank you, everybody.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much. What a pleasure to be there when those kids did that milestone in their lives, right? It really is. It's the payoff for the job and the six-figure salaries that we get. That's the buyout, too. Yeah, not from here. Well, thank you very much. I mean, awesome. This was a presentation and information only, so there's no public comment on it. But we thank you. We thank you very much for showing. I think it's important to continue. I know the evaluations, I know they're required, so to speak, but for us to be able to check in, and then for the community to see, again, teachers, parents, they have questions, and to see that there's some work being done. And even when, if there's a situation, as I was looking at some of the progress, some of the MAPS scores, maybe we didn't go up as much as maybe perhaps we might like, but it made me think about, especially coming out of the pandemic, man, those are kids that would have fallen more behind. You know, you get that summer, that loss over the summer that didn't have that loss. So, maintaining in that kind of an environment, when ordinarily they would have fallen backwards in the summer, most of those students. So, it's just good work. It's really good to see. So, thank you. All right. Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Alrighty, so we're on to Agenda Item 4. Let's start with Board Reports, and we will go whoever not started with. Trustee Minneto. Trustee Minneto.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I have to get my reading glasses on. All right. Well, some time back, I visited Moss and Drake with our Superintendent Dr. McNeil. And then, I went to TMCC Graduation. And then, I went to Inspire to see the unveiling of an amazing mural, an internal wall, and it's just gorgeous. It's just breathtaking. Then, I went to graduations at AACT, Sparks, McQueen, Damonte, North Valleys, Spanish Springs, North Star, HUG, Worcester, Reno, Rise, where I cried a lot.
Where we cried.
Innovations, and Turning Point, Galena, and Reed. Oh, and I also went to the O'Brien Farewell. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Clerk Minneto. Why don't we swing around this way, Dr. Nicolet?
I have been crazy fun busy all of the graduations to date, and it's been an honor looking into the eyes of the future, shaking hands. And I've just been very busy lately. And it's been sometimes draining, always soul-filling. And I look forward to the Incline High School graduation.
Thank you, Vice President Nicolet. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you. How's my hair look?
Looks like it looked last meeting.
Not bad, huh? So, I set myself up for that.
That's good. That's not bad. It looked good last meeting.
So, no, I think we've all been busy. I had the pleasure of touring Virginia Palmer, Esther Bennett, and Jesse Hall in the last few weeks. Also, had the opportunity to attend the Edon Taxi Cap event. Some of you were there. And it was more than just what's on top of the taxi. It was also what's on the side of the taxis. It's about three or four taxis that have murals that are painted and designed by our students. They're absolutely beautiful. Forget the Ubers, take a taxi.
That's right.
Absolutely gorgeous. I'll just keep it brief. And then, I had the privilege as well as attending all the graduations of the high schools in my district and a few others. I'd like to do all of them, but just time doesn't permit that, unfortunately. But, you know, just going into this as a new trustee, I thought, gosh, this is going to take a long time. You know, it's going to take a lot of my time. But I will tell you that by the time the last one was over with, it was almost depressing that there weren't anymore. You know, I was sort of let down Friday night or Saturday night after Reed's. I was like, wow, that's it. It's amazing. It was emotional. It was wonderful. God bless our seniors and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Mayberry. Trustee Church?
Thank you very much. I did have the opportunity to attend the Truckee Meadows Community College High School graduation, wonderful event. And then, I also had the opportunity to visit a school in my district, meet with the principal, very informative. Also attended the Capital Projects Committee. As everybody knows, it's very important to me, and listened to some of the specific details on capital projects. And unfortunately, right after that, started to go downhill, feeling not too good, scratchy throat. As I joked with some of the people, invest in Kleenex, because I went through tons of it. And every morning, I woke up going, okay, I'm going to go to the graduation today, and it didn't happen. I would have infected everybody and would not have looked good up there going through Kleenex after Kleenex. So, I sincerely apologize, but I want the community to know that's why I wasn't there. Wanted, every morning, I kept waking up, okay, this, today, I'm going to go, and it didn't happen. So, I just want the community to know that. And I do look forward likewise to the Incline Village event. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Trustee Smith?
Thank you, President Taylor. So, I'd like to start off with something that I learned in one of Superintendent McNeil's Good News emails. And this just floored me, that on May 27th, Mayor Hillary Sheevey declared that day Officer Lafayette Webb Day in Reno. And he's an officer that has served with our district for a very long time. I thought that this was an incredible recognition. I had the opportunity to see Officer Webb on my very, very first school visit, which was to Reno High School. And he was overseeing a little fender bender that had happened in the parking lot. And I just thought he was great. And so, I just want to bring attention to that. And although I'm talking about Officer Webb, I would be remiss to not bring attention to the Corps of Officers that he is a part of and that serve us. All the roles that we have here in the school district are incredibly important. But the roles of our officers in our school police force, I think we can all agree, is very unique. And so, thank you so much. And I very much appreciated the mayor bringing this attention, but would like to thank all of our officers. Beyond that, I attended kindergarten graduations at several schools, because kindergartens have a warm part in my heart. So, I attended kinder graduations at Roy Gom, Bernice Matthews' and Colin Ranch Elementary School, which is just a really special moment in children's educations. I also attended some meetings on topics related to potential future board items. So, there's a lot that the community doesn't see that's happening in the background. And then, also attended the Marvin Piccolo graduation with President Taylor, Vice President Nicolet, and Clerk Minneto, which I really felt was incredibly moving and very, very special. It was very intimate, and I loved that experience. Beyond that, in total, I participated in watching the graduations of 18 different high school programs. And that was AACT, Sparks High School, McQueen, Galena, Damonte Ranch, North Valley, Spanish Springs, Reed, North Star, HUG, Worcester, Reno, Rise, Innovations, Turning Point, and Inspire. And the reason why I list these all out is because I felt like I learned so much about some of the schools that I have not visited, because the ceremonies reflect their culture, their history, and I loved it. I felt like I got to know them in a different way. And it was really an honor to look out into the sea of thousands of graduates that we are putting out into our community, and seeing the pride, seeing the accomplishments, and knowing that this is why we do this work. And it was incredibly humbling and honoring. And I do want to assure our community that we have a phenomenal wave of young adults entering our community and world, thanks to the Washoe County School District.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Trustee Rodriguez?
I always follow.
No, I have to go the other way. I'm sorry. I tried. I had to keep that in mind. You said that last time.
Like last year. No, I did attend a number of graduations. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make all of them. Do have a full-time job, but I did make quite a bit of them, and it was phenomenal. It just brings everything around to, you know, why we're here and, you know, why we want to continue to stay here. It was just phenomenal. And it's, you know, I challenge naysayers to say that we're at the bottom, to look at these kids, or adults really, coming into the world. So, I did have some pictures. I sent them to JJ, but unfortunately, we were not able to upload them. There's one phenomenal picture of Diane photobombing selfie with me and Beth.
Oh, that's a good one. That's a good one.
That was pretty amazing. And then, there was another one, the six of us. It was phenomenal. It was a good picture. So, a lot of good pictures. And by the way, Sparks Police, or I'm sorry, Sparks, apologize, school police needs a new bike. One of their bikes blew up. Like, could you not?
It blew up.
She was there.
It blew up.
They need some new bikes. So, you know, just saying. And then, I also got to attend the O'Brien Middle School. We did have a meeting, but I got to get there a little bit early and get to sign some walls. It's like, since getting demos, so it was pretty nice being able to actually graffiti the school and being able to do it, you know, legally. Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, it was a, it's been a busy, busy month, but a couple of weeks. And it's, but the graduations were definitely the highlight. It was phenomenal.
No question.
Really was.
Thank you very much, Trustee Rodriguez, Vice President, I mean, Clerk Minneto. Oh, you started. It's my turn. My turn. No, no, I'm good. Nope, 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 nope. I'm good, I'm good. Just, again, I just, some of the same things. I got a chance to go to the Capital Funding Protection Committee meeting for a moment. I want to thank them, to thank them for their work and just to tell them how important their decision-making is to our decision-making. And just remind them of the commitment that we have to hold ourselves accountable to them, because they represent the community and the jurisdictions that they're a part of. So, we've all made some rounds. So, I know, I think you did the share round as well to the shared community. So, anyway, that's really important for our committees. And I encourage people, jump on and see when committees have openings you'd like to be a part, apply, apply. We need that from our community, really important. Taxi Top was amazing. As Trustee Mayberry said, they wrapped, it's not even, we call it Taxi Top, but it's not even the top of the taxi anymore. It's a wrap around the taxi. I mean, just really phenomenal work. But it's not quite a burrito. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Thank you so much.
I'm hungry.
Yes. Here's some snacks. Here's some snacks. Okay. O'Brien was awesome, just to have everyone come out. I actually ran, we said goodbye to HUG before a previous meeting, and I saw some of my HUG classmates that had also attended O'Brien. So, they were like, man, they're middle school and they're a high school, right? And it was like, some were like, oh, this is great. Some was like, oh, this is sad. So, kind of mixed, kind of mixed emotions for them to be able to do both, to have to do both of those, I should say, to say goodbye to those two schools. But it was really good and really exciting to see just the new O'Brien, getting ready to open up. And we're going to have some great, couple of great new schools open up in August. Definitely, everything all about the graduations, I was able to make all of them. And that's kind of a priority, unless I'm out of town, that's what I do. I'll miss Incline because I will be out of town, unfortunately. And I shared that with the Highlanders when we grew up there for the theater opening, because that's a very special, warm, community, intimate, emphasis on warm, because it's in the gym. And like, the whole entire community comes out, and it's warm. Did I say it was warm? It's warm, and it's regalia. Woo! But it's special. Yes, yes, a little warm. But this case, it's really special, so it's great. But I wanted to say, again, you know, congratulations to all of the graduates, and just the emotional moments that we had, you know, really the fun that we had, saying, you're watching, celebrating these students and the families that are exciting, and the parents that yell out and that scream out, and the kids who just, yeah, who flip, some more successfully than others, but nobody got hurt, right? Nobody got hurt. Those that run out with excitement and go the complete wrong way across the stage, we've had that, too. It's just a stuff, and it's just, and I want to commend, right, my colleagues who were able to go. It was so great. I was so proud of the showing that we had. It's eight o'clock on a Saturday morning, and there's eight people sitting there in regalia, in the front row trustees. It's like, this is fantastic, because it just sends a message that this is important. It just sends a message. And so, I was so proud, just so proud of our colleagues, us for being there and enjoying that. And before, and I just want to say thank you to Vanji.
Vanji.
Vanji, the queen of, I'm going up, sorry, the queen of graduation. Vanji and Diana was there, their team, and to the officers who were there, the whole staff. I mean, just an amazing, amazing job. Sorry, I didn't mean to go over. Sorry.
Well, thank you for stealing my thunder there. So, but obviously, this is, you know, this is a very emotional time, you know, for Debbie and myself and Pete. But I absolutely want to thank all of our trustees for being there, because that's the reason why we do what we do. And then, to Board Services, our communications staff for compiling the graduation video, our leadership team for being there for our students and our families, our officers who took the time to be there to make sure every single student, every single staff member was safe at all times, the print shop who takes an extraordinary amount of time on printing those programs to check every single trustee's name, every single scholarship. They just, they really dive into the details. Our warehouse, nutrition services, our housekeeping department, our plant facilities, Dawn and Christine who worked for the guest entry, and then, obviously, Vanji Russell. This is something that Vanji takes enormously seriously. She starts in December, meeting with our high school principals, getting feedback on what worked and what didn't. And then, this was our first time back in Lawler Event Center since 2019. So, working out contract details down to the last, like, literally down to the last minute. But graduation ceremonies would not be what they are without Vanji's love and care for what our students, and she knows that it means, you all said that, it means everything for those students to cross that stage. So, just a huge shout-out to Vanji. And again, thank you for your support on that.
Thank you very much. Our student isn't here, so we'll go ahead. Our last item, public comment, public comment from the public, see if we have any. And these are on topics not specifically addressed elsewhere in the agenda, but three minutes to address anything you'd like. JJ?
John Appolito.
Welcome back, Mr. Appolito.
Hi, my name is John Appolito. I'm a former K-12 teacher. I have two kids left in the district, and you can find 1,500 of us on Facebook at Protect Nevada Children. I wanted to talk for just a minute about public comments, initial public comments. I've been coming to these meetings for about 12 years. This is the only time I remember initial public comments being removed from the agenda. Someone said they were removed one other time during shared discussions. I'm not sure if that's true. I found out today, the board changed a rule so they could remove the item on the agenda asking to approve the agenda in advance, removing one more place for the public to comment at the beginning of the meeting about their disapproval to being silenced. This board has successfully silenced all parents and stakeholders. Now, if a parent wants to speak on something not on the agenda, they have to wait till the end of the meeting. These meetings can go between three and eight hours, maybe more. You have successfully silenced, quote, "The Trump Mob," is according to Angie's mailer sent for her campaign. But it's not just the Trump mob that's been silenced, Angie. Everyone has been silenced. You wanted to be on this board. Part of the job is to listen to stakeholders. I know it can be difficult, but that's what you signed up for. And some of you are trying to be on here again. With the six items being removed from the agenda today, I had to wait over four and a half hours to speak now. I have a proposed solution. Instead of attempting to silence everybody, stay in your lane. Focus on educating students in the basics. No one will object to that. Spend less time on transformative social and emotional learning, CRT, social justice, comprehensive sex ed, psychological assessments for entire schools, and more time on traditional education. Here's one current example. The share director, two years ago, made $145,000 a year with benefits. The survey she just put out asked fourth and fifth grade parents what they thought about the proposed share curriculum. 80% of the parents who completed the survey opposed the curriculum. Last Monday, the share committee approved the curriculum with minimal changes, even though almost everyone who spoke at the meeting publicly, also publicly opposed the changes. Why does the district pay so much money for someone to do something most parents? parents and stakeholders oppose? Again, focus on improving education. No one will object to that. You can find 1,500 of us on Facebook at Protect Nevada Children. Bye, Kristen.
Thank you, Mr. Epalito.
You're welcome.
The board received emails from Kimberly Carden, Dr. Elizabeth Hill, Susan Thompson, Dr. Jennifer Mortenson, Sarah Dawkins, Dr. Tammy Abernathy, Anonymous, Richard Peterson, and Beth Martin.
Thank you very much. Okay, our meeting is adjourned, and as we discussed earlier, we are working to, our next, our regular meeting is on June 28th, but look for confirmation of a special meeting on the 21st, so that we can consider those items that were removed in this time, and make sure that, out of an abundance of caution, and to make sure that the district doesn't have any more further undue things to be concerned about, we'll take care of those things as we discussed earlier. Okay? All right. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.